Welcome to the village council, our regular meeting. July 22nd, 2019. And it is now 7:00 AM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Liz, can we have a roll call vote please? Bryce?
Here.
Bussin?
Here.
Ashman?
Here.
George?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
I have Robinson, I absent with notice, Scornica?
Here.
Next up, we have the curmudgeon agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support?
Support.
Thank you. No, no, you're fine. I was looking for supporting, sir. All right, motion by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Bussin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six zero. Next up, we have approval of our minutes. And we have four minutes to approve. First up is the June 24th.
Can we make a motion to approve all three of the minutes?
Doesn't matter to me. Whatever you choose to do. We don't script anything until we're on it.
We would, I suppose you could do it that way, but if somebody had a concern with any one of them, it would be...
I was wondering if there was...
Well...
Yes, it was supposed to happen, I already turned in and requested before the paper was sent out, and then they were supposed to be done by Thursday by 5:00 PM. So if there is anything that's out of glory, definitely let us know. If not, it should be okay.
Does anybody have concern on any of the... Other than the closed session, I think we approve those by signature.
Right, that's the portion, correct. Yeah, you still, yes, you need to...
Oh, okay. Are there any concerns with any of this?
Well, I guess I just, for the record, I did ask when I reviewed these minutes about, this is on July 8th, I did ask about the new business one, about the point of order being raised, and about the section that was quoted, and that was in the minutes, because initially it was not. And looking at that, for the record, I'd like to state that that's an improper quote for that, for that section. And the point of order needed to be addressed with the ruling. Because otherwise, we have a motion out there, a dangling, if you will, motion. And when there's a point of order made and noted, the chair is to state the order, and then council needs to address whether it's agree or disagree, to move on, so that...
I agree.
Excuse me, so that it can be, it can be...
Acted upon.
Acted upon in accordance with the outcome at that time. And 62.13 is regarding elected officials in their vacancy, not a standing committee.
Actually, 62.13 actually does cover all other positions. All other officers appointed by the village are appointed by...
Officers?
Yes.
We're talking about a standing committee, when you're on a standing committee, you're not an officer. You're a member of a committee.
Officers elected.
So, because this is, this is, this is making reference to if trustee should pass away, resign, move out, whatever the case may be, and there's a vacancy open for a president, president of a pro town, or whatever, then council would make a decision, we're going to hold a special election to cover that vacancy, not a standing committee.
Yes, I am very familiar with the 62 dot 13 also, and it states that for elected officials, the council has to appoint, for all other vacancies, the village president appoints or nominates, and the council approves or consents. That's the way that that reads.
I can read that.
So if we would like to, I guess the option would be to change that, then you could say that the motion was withdrawn from the table, but it was not. So it would have to say no action taken.
Correct, that's because we needed to act appropriately at that time, and so the motion could have been withdrawn, but when the motion's withdrawn, it's not even documented.
Well, according to Robert's rules, which I also checked, it says that when a point of order is raised, the point of order is considered by the chairperson, and the chairperson is the one who decides whether you continue to allow action on the item that was at point of order raised against it, or not.
And that is taken to a vote, and council decides if they agree with the chair or not.
Then you cannot make a motion that is not appropriate, and has to be withdrawn from the table. It was not, we decided no action was taken at that point, because Councilman Hayden called point of order, and at that point, it is not withdrawn, there is a point of order. So you have to do either or, and point of order was stated, so therefore it's not withdrawn. So technically, as it is laid out...
But the ruling is not, but the ruling of the chair is not inherent, so this is, this isn't documented. It wasn't handled properly, is what I'm getting at, so that we have a ruling, so that the council could have... I mean, you made a point of order, you know, correct or incorrect. You made a point of order, and then the, the follow through on that, through the chair, and then the chair, the ruling, and then the chair, the council, or the ruling of the council, I should say.
Just as, just as another addition to that clarification on the record, we were in a special meeting also, and since that was not an agenda item on the meeting, to make the change, we could not have taken action anyways, because it was not listed in the agenda. So there was more than one reason why we could not act on that motion at that time.
So the chair never should have allowed the motion to begin with? Then we would have a dangling motion, because you can't take an action in a special meeting.
Well, the motion was made and seconded, and the chair didn't have...
No, I'm just...
And then the point of order was called, I don't think the chair had a lot of time to really step and say, well, we can't do that right now, until after all those...
Well, then we could recite. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, that the 62.13 for the vacancies is referring to the vacancies in an office, trustee, or president, elected official, not a standing committee member.
So the point of order raised was incorrect?
Correct. Without reading it, I have no idea what's up with that.
I think that is a matter of opinion, I don't think that that, I think the MMO handbook interprets it the way that I was interpreting it. If we think that there needs to be clarification, we could probably consult with our attorney to get a decision from him, but I don't know if that's been done yet or not.
I don't think we...
No, and it doesn't make a difference, because the attorney said that a motion cannot be made, and a motion was made, and that it was either passed withdrawn or point of order. Something has to be done, one was done, not the other, it doesn't make a difference which one. It's, it's still withdrawn, if, you can't go back and change to say that it was withdrawn, because it wasn't. So we have to leave point of order.
But the attorney, the council, the attorney happened after the fact, so like the...
No, it was before. The attorney gave the recommendation as we talked that day.
But with, with the motion, then if the attorney said he couldn't make a motion or a point of order, then it should have been discussed at that time, chair.
As it was, I, I, that was the discussion, we cannot make this motion. That's when the discussion was, at the exact time.
For, if anybody wants, I can, I can recite this, or we can follow up later, but I think that everybody...
I think it's important to make sure that we do understand and are interpreting the rules appropriately. So if there's one interpretation by trustee Scornica, and another interpretation by trustee Hayden, then we need to find out what the correct interpretation is. And just to cite innuendos back and forth, she's got clear facts, you said you got clear facts, and right now, there is no decision, so I think it's important that we, to clarify it.
I mean, because we're talking about reason of death and stuff like that.
Sure that we are operating properly under the Michigan State law, under our own regulations and rules.
Exactly.
Agree.
And I would say that, that's another topic that's covered in the general law of the village handbook, that is the responsibility of the village president to ensure that those are happening. So I think it would be upon our village president to follow up and get that clarification for council.
That's what we're asking.
And can you please each clarify it with what you're looking for, clarification of? What would you like to find, as your, what is your question? Make sure it's...
Section 62.13 is regarding elected officials' appointments or elected positions that are vacant for resignations, death, something, it is not pertaining to appointments to standing committees.
It does include not elected officers that are created...
Our treasurer clerk, which I, our treasurer clerk, our officers...
And other village personnel or positions, as we see fit, and I would... We, it's, it's a little bit vague there, but I am assuming that the way that the MMO handbook reads that it's being interpreted, that that means that any positions that we create for Operation Village, such as the subcommittees that we have, that those are appointed positions. We weren't elected specifically to be a personnel committee member, or a street parks and streets, or whatever, member, so those are appointed positions. And I think that's where the MMO handbook is saying, for any appointed positions, that would be the village president's discretion to appoint, and the council's to approve.
Yeah, I'm not looking at, I'm not referencing the MMO, I'm referencing the general law.
And I am referencing too, the general law may be a little ambiguous in that, but it basically states, all other officers for the village are appointed.
So what is your same thing, question that you would like to ask the village?
I guess the only clarification is our, our committees that we designate and form as a village, are they covered as appointments by the section of the general law of the village handbook?
The 62.13?
Yes.
Talking about committee members.
I understand.
Not elected officials.
Personally, I'm fine with that context of the attorney, I think the attorney is being overutilized in the charges for it, but I...
But if that is our decision, then that's up to you.
I think we can handle this in the assignments, following our, our own rules of procedure.
Yes, I would say the state though, that also, the planning commission and the DDA are mandated by the state law too, or covered by state laws as well, so those, same rules apply to those committees already, or those commissions already, that the president nominates and the council approves. So I think that's the only question, is, is that extend also to other committees that we've got?
Well, they have their own bylaws, and what they would go by, right, that they would follow ours, but I think that, I think we can settle any appointments that are following our own rules of procedure.
All right, so let's circle back around to the approval of minutes, and where we're at with that. And we'll take note of that information. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 24th, 2019, regular meeting, closed session meeting of June 24th, 2019, special meeting of June 27th, 2019, and special meeting of July 8th, 2019.
So just for the record, the agenda shows that there are four individual motions, and trustee Hayden chose to lump all four of those into one motion, and I do object to, to the July 8th special meeting, and as we discussed here, due to the interpretation, the discrepancy on item number one, village personnel committee vacancy.
So you'd like to take the first three, and second?
Well, in that case, I will withdraw my motion, and we will approve them one by one. So I make a motion instead to approve the meetings of the regular meeting of June 24th, 2019, as presented.
I'll support that.
Was that my... All right, so the regular meeting, June 24th, motion made by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Bussin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six zero.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes of opposed session, June 24th, 2019, as presented.
I don't think everybody's reviewed them yet.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you...
I thought when coming was the new enough.
I wasn't, I wasn't there.
You can just still acknowledge that you've reviewed them, you know.
It's one line.
Yeah.
It's wrong.
And I guess my comment too would be about, I think, the second point is, you know, the July minutes, is that the, the appeal being, being properly handled as well, so that we can all get settled at that time.
So we're looking for support of the June 24th closed session minutes?
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Ashman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six zero.
Okay, make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 27th, 2019, as presented.
Support? Motion by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Bruce. All in favor for the June 27th special meeting?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries, five one. Next up, we have the special meeting of July.
Does anybody want to make a motion on that one?
I guess, make a motion, you know, for the, for the record, the items that I've already noted.
Did you want to have something specifically noted in the minutes, compared to what was in the minutes?
Yes, what I, what I've already stated, for the record.
I'll, I'll support the motion.
Colin, you did make a motion?
I did not make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you said hinting on that, okay.
Well...
That's fine.
Okay.
Basically, yeah, I have no problem making a motion to approve of, which my...
As amended?
Is, is my notations for the record of this meeting.
So do you have those, the...
I have the ruling on the point of order, was not in the minutes. And that 62 dot 13 refers to vacancy in office, not standing committee member. And then also, the appeal was improperly handled as well. Is that accurate?
As well as the, the motion?
As well as...
The motion, the motion, the ruling, the point of order ruling, and the appeal.
Not properly handled.
All right, so we're looking for a motion, the July 8th?
Do we want to include any...
I just did that.
...that, and how will be made by the village president and the certification?
I asked you, and I thought you said no.
You'll just read the most...
Oh, yeah, okay. All right.
I'll continue my...
All right. There we go. Thank you. I misunderstood you, I thought you said, as long as that's in there, with the group of them.
That's correct.
All right.
Let's get it right.
Mm-hmm.
So just for clarification then, we're approving the minutes with the objections that trustee Scornica mentioned?
Correct.
As, as part of the...
All right, motion on the table, by Councilman Scornica, supported by Councilman Bussin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six zero. Next up, we have our acceptance items, and those include the billing department report, our ordinance violation report, and the board's minutes from the planning commission, the DDA authority, and grant of motion. Item number seven will be our dispersments.
Just real quick on this, our ordinance tracking.
I've updated it.
Updated.
It looks like there was a letter sent out to one of the...
I have a, our dispersments, correct?
Yes.
I have a question regarding line 34. Is the total amount, if split, the 1118, is that a correct figure?
That was what tells the amount of the bill, correct.
So the, and I mentioned this to Bill before he left, and I haven't followed up with it, or, or anything, but the, should the amount that we're approving be the amount of our check that we're writing, not in the anticipation of what reimbursement we're going to receive from DDA, or from anybody else? If we're writing the check, shouldn't our check be approved of what is going to be written for? Now, not, not... I mean, we go, and we look at a check number that's written for this amount, for the attorney, for the July invoice, and it should, you know, it's 1118, and our check is only for 182. I just don't think that that's a good audit trail, I think that the amount should be what our check is written for, and then, when we get the reimbursement back, it can be split up how we have it, but our check should be what our check is written for, is what we should be approving.
Actually, I think if you take a look at the actual details on, on the attorney fees, it shows that they are...
That was the prior invoice, I think.
So what you're looking for is to see the 182 and the 1118 flat in their...
Correct, I think our checks should be what our checks are written for, is what we're approving, and then, when we get the reimbursement from DDA, or from whoever, it should be reflected, but...
So it would have to be village amount if split, instead of total amount if split? And that's true. Can't be the total.
Or, or you can do total amount here, right, because that applies to everything, and then the DDA.
Right, so I know that we do that for cop here, we do that then for, you know, anything else.
Would you mind, Beth, and, and not just switching off that call? Most of my...
I don't do it.
Would you mind, Liz? I saw they're looking, I'm thinking, oh, she's writing it down right now.
And then, and then I think it would, I think it would help DDA, and their keeping as well, that their, you know, the check is, I don't know, I just, I'm surprised you all just haven't said anything like that.
So who, who did write the check to the attorney? The village or...
The village does.
The village does?
The village does, and then we seek reimbursement from the DDA if any of the charges are theirs.
So the DDA does not write any checks?
They, they don't, they do write checks, but the bill, it's billed to the village.
So the services provided through the village are paid for by the village, and we get them first?
Correct.
Services they contract directly through the DDA, they pay for themselves?
Correct.
Okay, makes sense.
Hasn't always spent years practicing to use our same attorney that we've always used? And it's like, do they, I mean, they just follow, they just follow our attorney, whatever we have to go with?
For the last three years, that's...
That's what you know?
Yeah.
Does the DDA use much attorney services?
No, not typically, they hit, just until recently.
Like not to. So, unless they have a warrant lien, probably makes sense just to give you that kind of...
All right, so we're looking for a motion for dispersments.
I have one other question, this has to do with point item number 19, for the McKenna and Associates. So there's a total amount of 1,026.50 cents. And then in parentheses of that, it says, I assume it's, they charge just additional 500 dollars to attend a meeting?
When Susan was here for that meeting, I had a 500 dollar fee.
All right, and then what was the balance for it?
The balance was for their updates to mapping, I was kind of bringing invoices with me, and I didn't even think about it. Work they did on updates to the master plan edits, and stuff like that.
All right, so from here on in, McKenna will be charging us 50, or 500 dollars for each attendance tour, if we request a meeting?
Correct, if we request they attend the meeting, it's 500.
Did we request that they attend that meeting? I don't remember that we requested. We requested they be there, because I, I remember her coming to the podium, but she didn't...
She didn't pretty much...
Then, anything, and I guess, I guess one of my, the question that comes to my mind is, did we ask her to, and didn't, and if we did, okay, and then did we know it was going to cut off the card, it was going to cost us 500 dollars? Did we know that we were in, that we were going to be charged for that? And was there really a need, because if we did know that, then we could have determined if there really was a need to have her present.
Well, if I remember the bid that they gave, we should have known there's, because that was...
But after so many meetings.
There's so many meetings, and then each additional meeting passed, that was 500 dollars, and we've already...
Which Bill has mentioned over and over again, we have passed that, so we, we know that it was going to be a fee, and we questioned whether we should have a...
As I recall, some of those meetings, though, were on their back, not on our back, they...
Who was keeping track of our meetings?
Correct a lot, they felt they're, they're, that's, we should be charged for their lack of understanding. That's their job, is to do the master plan.
And with the amount of errors that were in, like, to your point, trustee Bussin, there were quite a few errors on their side, and if we're being charged, we should be questioning that for sure.
Yeah, we should definitely be seeking restitution for that, because I don't think that they, that her being here at that meeting warranted 500 dollars, because she didn't design anything.
If we have our, just as a question, if you have an attorney who show up here, where do they get, have you any idea?
400, 400 dollars.
400, so they're actually getting more than an attorney?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, our attorney, you know, like, I want, I, it, I could be wrong, but it just seems like 400 rings a bell from when he comes to a meeting, and I could be wrong on that, it just seems like a netball card, but 500 dollars, and what did we get out of it? We got a lot of errors that we had to spend time correcting. And she was, and actually, the person, excuse me, I think her name was Sue. She didn't, she's fairly new to McKenna, and didn't even really, she's coming in at the back end, which I, you know, I sympathize with that, not knowing all that we went through, but to come in at the back end, what, what was she going to, what did she do for us?
Well, the council had requested her to come in to answer questions, she came, we could, there's nothing, any doubt, that was the decision made by council.
Actually, looking at the, these attorneys charging, he's charging 130 dollars per hour.
Interesting.
An hour, but, but to come here, I mean, there's travel time invested, it's not just by an hour. Yeah. I just didn't recall specifically asking for her, and I didn't specifically recall that we knew that we would be charged the 500 dollars, even though at the front end, to your point, that we knew at some point we were going to, after four meetings, or three meetings, or something, we were going to be charged. Did we know, was council aware that we were at that third meeting point, that we were going to start being charged? I don't recall that.
Yep, I know Beth had mentioned it a couple times before he left. Every meeting that we do is now charged, I know we mentioned it, planning commission, and the council, that that was going to be the case, so we really need to do, you know, all of our errors at one time, turn everything at the same time, and that's when we requested that Liz have the document, and to make the corrections, was because we had already met that cap.
So, so to that point, so McKenna itemized out all the corrections that they made, correct? And then they built to those corrections?
They haven't, actually, I have a call into her today, she's working offsite, but I'm going to ask them to start itemizing, and if they can go back and itemize. What they charge is, like, working hours, so, you know, they'll say, well, this person spent so many hours on this thing, and that's, you know, they combined... they combined everything. So I, I do have a call in them, to them to get everything itemized.
Well, I think we're having a special meeting coming up just to confirm or review the accuracy of the master plan. And it would be nice to know what we instructed them to change versus what was actually changed to what we previously had in special meetings when we had our, um, work sessions for the approval of the master plan. Otherwise, we could go back here this coming up Thursday and find out there are additional things missing. And they can say, oh, you never told us that, or, you know, and it could go on and on, right? So that, that would be a concern on my part.
I thought I did give everybody a copy of the strike through.
Right.
And the, and McKenna's corrected. So we should have that to go by on Thursday.
Okay, and then the only thing missing was the map changes then?
Which I provided to see there.
All right, yep, all right.
Any more questions on dispersments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the dispersments totaling seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-nine and eighty-eight cents as presented for date, uh, arranged, uh, June seventeenth, twenty nineteen through July fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
I'd like to amend the motion to include the, the eleven eighteen rather than the one eighty-two to, to adjust the amounts, you know, how we just talked about, like, um...
Would, would, would it be just as simple as changing the...
Well, the total's wrong. The seventeen, three...
Oh, I see.
That's what I, so I just suggest that we amend it to add that nine thirty-six to it.
Well, and we would have to do the other columns as well. We should leave this as is and going forward change it. There's three columns that would have to be changed that way.
No, because we're only, we're approving the seventeen thousand.
I know, we would have to change, I, um, line number one, line number thirty-two, and line number thirty-four. Or we change it going forward and we leave this as is, as every other one is going to approve this way and start it from here.
Well, it's, so I didn't do the map and all the line items tallied up, but if you tallied up the amount column?
The corrected amount would be eighteen thousand two sixty-five eighty-eight.
Thank you.
So that's changing all three of those?
Twenty-sixty-five eighty-eight?
Well, you just have to take a thousand fifty-three thirty and add it to the seventeen three twenty-nine, right?
If we're going to do that on the first line item, the total would be one fifty-five, not the fifty-two. We would have to switch those out.
I understand.
The same as thirty-two. So that's all three?
She's just talking about...
Excuse me, is that all three of those?
Well, no, I, I just changed the, um, column one.
I can adjust the column three. So we need to do...
Actually, um...
I was going to say, isn't it the seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-nine and eighty-eight cents plus the one thousand fifty-three?
Correct.
Yes. So I think you gave us a column, the first column, the third column, the eighth person, second column. Am I close?
Well, plus there's three, three amounts in there, remember?
Well, I was looking at the, the seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-nine and eighty-eight cents plus the one thousand three hundred and thirty, because that's those three amounts.
You just have to add the middle column?
Yes.
Into the first column?
Correct.
Yes.
And I neglected to get two of those numbers. So the correct amount is eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars, eighteen cents.
And then, um...
And then I can modify the rest back at the office, but for the motion, that's what you would be approving?
Have, have we been reimbursed now for, from the DDA on those amounts?
Um, I think so. We haven't even paid the bill on the last...
So, so we haven't been reimbursed of those which show up by next month's dispersment?
We did. We received it. We did.
We did receive the check, okay. But this eighteen thousand is the amount that we have to write the check for to cover all our...
Correct.
So where the documented that we received, so Beth confirmed we did receive that check. So how do we document that we received that check then?
She documents it with...
Wait until the dispers, next month's dispersment report will show up on there?
It will show up in our next month's, um, deposits, receipts, cash receipts, right here.
So make a motion to amend the dispersment report for a total of eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighteen cents for the date range of June seventeenth, twenty nineteen through July fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
Motion on the table by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilwoman Skornika. The amount changed to the eighteen three eighty-three eighty. General, hold on a minute, please, Liz. Parksen?
Yes.
Edsman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Skornika?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero. I've cited on the agenda will be the treasurer's report. Thank you very much, Beth, appreciate it. To make a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as presented.
Support.
Motion by President Bryce, supported by Councilwoman Hayden. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And I'd like to come to the...
Who is it, floor two?
And I'd just like to comment, there's a lot of detail here, very good detail. And, and for us to, um, look at all the line items, to go back and, and audit the checks, et cetera, we don't have the time to go back and detail or vet out or validate each one of these line items on this report. And, and to me, that'd be a lot to ask for council to go and verify the data that's in here. The data might be perfectly good, very accurate, but for us to go validate that data, how would we do that? Other than say, oh, it's in there, it's got to be, assume it's right. But if we just make that assumption, there might be an error within it, how do we flush that out? Right now, we, we would need a lot of time to be able to review each one of these line items. So that's why I voted no on the treasurer's report. It has nothing to do with your accuracy, but for us to assume it's all accurate without actually sitting down in like an auditor, right? We're not auditors. And to me, that would take much more time to approve the detail that you provided up. It has nothing to do with your work more than just a procedural thing for us to be able to go back and, and... Otherwise, we're just assuming. Because we never got this detail before, right? We just got the front page and we just, it was just accepted. Now we have all this detail and it puts us in a position where we would have to do a lot more legwork to basically review all this detail, otherwise we just assume, right?
It's never recommended by the council.
Are you saying that you do not want it?
Well, I'm saying that, I'm, I'm talking to council, I'm actually, so first, I'm talking to council to say, maybe we should consider, or is there a different way for us to present this data such that we don't have to put our audit hat on and audit all this line item data? That's all. I'm not saying, I'm, I'm saying that's what we got to do. I'm just saying that's why I voted no on the treasurer's report.
Actually, I'm in full agreement with you, Dan, and I, I, I question whether there's really that much value added for us as council members, um, to get that much detail for the meetings. It's, of course, always open if we are interested to get that. I'm sure they're always willing to provide that additional detail to us. If we have questions on the overall report, we could probably request that prior to the meeting. So I would support if you want to kind of reduce and simplify the amount of content, I would be in support of that.
So I'd be looking for council as a whole. I appreciate your opinion, but I'd, we had trustee George and Skornika. Consider their opinions on what we should be doing.
For me, it's never, um, it's, it's always discouraged that a council approve a treasurer's report without having an auditing committee, if you will, to review that. I've been a couple of approving the treasurer's report, um, for some time now. And it's not about, um, the information, it's about, I have went, I have went through the information, I went through check by check, and I have found, um, you know, a few mistakes. But to, to go on, to do that on a, on a regular basis, um, but it is really frowned upon by parliamentarians to have council boards approve the treasurer's report. And based on that, I'm not going to be approving the treasurer's report.
And this used to be an acceptance item? And you chose it to be an approved item? You are the one who made the decision. This used to be accepted. You chose to make this an acceptance item, I mean, an item, and you wanted the detail.
Excuse me?
This is for our treasurer to do. It is for us to notice that she's doing. It is for our auditor to check our treasurer. It is not our job to be an auditor. That is not what we're here for, and that's not what any of us have the ability to do. But this is simply saying, we are aware of what you're doing, we see what you're doing, and thank you for giving us the information. We are not auditing you.
No, I correct, I correct you, um, Tommy. It wasn't, the acceptance from, a change from acceptance to approval based on an auditor from either when John was here or Bill to recommend that. I suggested that we get the backup data to support the report. That was what my input was. I never changed it from acceptance to approval, so, um, I just, for the record. But that was not me. It was, it was...
Okay, so I, and I do recall trustee Skornika asking for the detail if we're going to be motioning on it. But, but really what drove the motion? So we were accepting it for many, many years, right? So why, what drove, it wasn't trustee Skornika driving it from acceptance item to a motion. And once we put it in a motion, we're assigning our name to auditing our treasurer. And we can't, we should not be put in that position. That's the point.
And, and another thing for the record, um, we don't act as individuals. If, if I did make a motion to do that, it would have been with the council supporting a motion pass. So it wouldn't have been a decision I made, it would have been a decision council makes as any of our decisions are made.
All right, so we will look further into that as to what that entails to be approved as to whether that entails auditing or just approval. And we'll get that information for our next meeting. Is there anything further on the treasurer's report at this point? All right. Next up, we'll have our public comments, and that would be on agenda items only, please, at this time. So if you have something, please step forward and go ahead and state your name if you don't mind and share it with us. All right. Hearing done. Item number ten will be our special, our consent agenda. We have a special events permit for that. And item number eleven will be the other trustee updates. If you don't mind, please.
Did we already approve the consent agenda?
Oh, we did now. It's, you know, I'm thinking consent, throwing them all in there, it was only the one, I'm sorry. Would like a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I just have a question. This was received, obviously, well, was received, the, the date of the eighteen, I don't know when it was received. But, um, this is really just in retrospect, right? Because they already started the specialty, but because the farmer's market really opened already, correct? So this is in retrospect permit? Because they, sure, thanks. Because when I was, um, the farmer's market, I was under the impression already started. That's why they had the two vendors there over the weekend.
Mam Jenkins with the DDA. In lieu of not starting the market, we encourage the two produce vendors to get a permit of their own and start selling produce.
Oh, that's not what she shared with me, okay.
So both, both the farmers have participated in the farmer's market committee meetings for the past several months. And because of growing season, because of the first market manager leaving, and our current market manager coming on board in June, we held off launching a market. But the farmers are ready with their produce, and so we encourage them to start.
Okay, that's, when I stopped by Saturday, she shared that, like, they were on their own.
Not quite like that.
Pardon me?
Not quite like that.
Not quite like that, that's not like, well, we've got this already, they've already started, so, okay. This was in retrospect, but it's not. They're, they're getting their permits on their own.
Yep.
Because they told me that that's where they were assigned to be.
Did we have any...
We did help, I, I don't know who you're referring to, whether it's Cozy Farms or Sprat. We did help them identify spots that they could use.
And how did it go, Senator?
I wasn't here, but I just talked to our market manager before I came into the meeting. And she said, from what she's heard, everything went great. They sold out of all their produce. Traffic was very positive, uh, throughout the day. One, one little snag is they sold out in the one o'clock hour. We had advertised that it was going until two.
Oh, that people appear earlier next week?
It's going until three.
Two. That, the permit has set up time.
Oh, okay, that's including set up time, okay, okay.
Maybe if they sold out, like...
They're gone, then people show up.
They want to go pick produce, you know, right? It's on the line.
I, I believe, from what I understand, they stayed just so that they could engage consumer if people happened to come. Up until two. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Motion by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman George. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six zero. We'll go back to the trustee committee updates. Sorry, please.
The fire authority has not met. We will be meeting, I believe, next month. However, I stopped by, you know, uh, the rescue teams were very, very much on call, very active because of the fire weather. So they ran a lot of calls. And we'll know more when they, when we meet. Another month, possibly, oh, you know. So that's all.
Parks and Rec. This time next month, I hope to have detailed information on the Parks and Rec master plan update. I would hope to have, pretty close to a final product, my standpoint, by, by the time it's done. As a separate item, from September Fest standpoint, I know Parks and Rec is actively involved in setting that up. It is a thirtieth year anniversary for September Fest, so I want to do it right, and it will. And just in general, the summer programs have been doing real well. I saw the ad recently in the paper for the fall program, so, uh, including a flag, co-ed, uh, flag, nine eleven, your own flag, uh, that kind of, kind of team. So, yeah, they're active and they're going to do it over time. But from my standpoint, on the master plan, I'll have something next meeting. Yeah, September Fest, I, I expect to be attending September planning, because these are planning meetings.
Okay, for the planning commission, um, I'll start with planning commission. For the planning commission, we did, at the last planning commission meeting, we had a review of the site plan review for Forest South Street, that's the MSU credit unit. It looks like it's going to be a real nice plan, the way they've got it worked out. They're planning on trying to restore back to the original brick that they can see behind the facade that's over right now. They are also going to be doing some changes in the lanes through, including creating a little bit of green space in between the two buildings there, which I think will be nice. So we made a recommendation to approve that plan pending fire chief's approval and also pending compliance with the ordinances for the green space. But I think it's going to be a really nice, uh, I think it's going to be a really nice site. They will be starting construction soon. But they did say that they would make sure that for September Fest, any construction activities would be halted so that they wouldn't interfere with the event. So they seem very cooperative, I think. I think it's going to be a really nice upgrade to that. Besides that, we also made note that on the capital improvement plan, we want to make sure that we add into the drainage issue as part of the capital improvement plan, since we know that's unexpectedly expensive to have to add. And it's definitely going to be a significant project, so that should be incorporated in the capital improvement plan when we have a chance. And it was also, subsequent to that meeting, was noted that two of the planning commissioners' commissions have come to an end. So we need to get those commissioners reappointed if they so wish. And I'm pretty sure we'll be discussing again at the next planning commission meeting. And then get a recommendation back to council on those two commissioners who's dropped that.
When did they end?
June 1st.
So that was, that was my fault that it didn't get approved at that meeting. Well, we didn't have a June meeting, but in July.
I was going to say, Emily was not there.
Yeah. So we definitely will be addressing it in our August meeting. Other than that, from, do you want to give personnel?
Okay.
Okay. Personnel committee, we did receive a total of five applications or five resumes that came in. Of those five, there was, I think, from my view, there was only two that looked like they had the right qualifications that we're looking for. One of those, we tried to schedule one in due, but that made it through their outpatient. The second one indicated they were only interested in part-time position for village manager. So we decided that that was not something we would wish to pursue. So at this point, we unfortunately could not find any additional candidates that we felt were worthy of bringing forward to council based on the qualifications that we saw.
I'm going to report out that I'm not necessarily streets, but more drains. So I know the guys are continuing to do their patchwork, et cetera. I know there are roads within the building that are crumbling, right? And they continue the patchwork and do good to keep up with it. The drains that I'm talking about are two drains. I did review with Bob Huxwell, and I do believe I brought the council, maybe a couple meetings ago, that Bob was looking to open up a crock that is covered with blacktop on the basketball court to the west, if you look at it. So when I did talk with Bob, he assured me that from bringing it to council, that everything would be roped up, yellowed, banded. He did all the, you know, does all the safety markups, et cetera. But we've got a basketball tournament coming up, I believe. It's all advertised. And my discussions with Bob at that time would be that we first wait for the basketball tournament to end and then bring it to council. So at this point, I'd like council to approve him to open up that crock. But while he believes if he can understand where those lines are going to, and he's got a very good idea of where they're going to free those up, it could relieve some flooding that occurs further to the east, behind the concession stand and behind the ballpark area and that area. So that's the, that's the first one I wanted to talk about. And then the second one would be, I believe it was a couple meetings ago, it was commented that the Crosseton Park drain, and when I say Crosseton Park drain, it's the drain that's in the parking lot of the Brandon Township offices here. We had proposed putting a, an underground pipe from directly across to the creek. And it was commented that we would have to go underneath a septic field. So a spec for septic field is not to be any greater than four feet deep. All right? So I, when I went to talk to the neighbor, Mr. Hurda, he's here tonight, we, as councils, said we approved to have our row engineering and his engineering group meet together and discuss that option, right? Well, according to Mr. Hurda, that meeting never took place. His engineer was there, ours was not. All right? So the two engineering groups did not meet. So further in my discussions with Mr. Hurda, I find out that he is a professional landscaper. He does have the laser technology. And it's truly a 16-foot drop between the area that we're proposing to an underground pipe to go directly to the, to the creek, right? Via the bio, bio drain, excuse me, however you might call it. So 16 feet, that's well below four feet, right? So the concerns, just because there's a septic field and just to blow it off because there's something over there, I think that meeting of the two engineers should have recognized that grave drop. They should have recognized that, okay, instead of us, tracking us to go up to Mill Street and then back down Mill Street, then I don't think all bets are off because there's, there's a septic field there. Septic fields are not to go any lower than four feet from the surface.
What about being put from the Oakland County senatorian? I understand that you was there, Chris, started from Oakland County.
He did not meet with, with our residence engineer.
He, no.
And that's what we agreed to do.
He came for the engineer and gave the, what they would or would not approve when the engineers came. Then the information was given to the engineers. The engineers were supposed to meet and discuss the options with that. You can't go within so many feet of a septic system at all. And by doing that, it would be into the next door neighbor's septic, and you can't go between them. So it would have to go down Mill Street.
How many feet within, so we're not going underneath.
That's Oakland County, so we cannot go underneath it. We can't go anywhere near it. We can't go that area at all. We have to go so far from their septic, either side. And he said, you can't go under. You can't, you can't go around. You have to go so far away. I don't remember the exact footage. I don't have that on me.
So is that something that we can get? Because I got to tell you, it's going to save us a lot of money to go that route as opposed to up to Mill Street and then back down to the creek.
We cannot go that route. Oakland County will not approve it. Period. He said we would never approve that. So to go Mill Street, to cut across Cedar through, possibly, we have been given verbal permission to go through, what's her business?
Care reimbursement.
Yeah, there you go. Was it, what's her name? I don't know, but care reimbursement. And to not take down the two trees and to stab and not touch their septic area, so it doesn't interfere with that at all. Where ours comes in behind your septic. The two trees that would be down at Eastman. Those two beautiful trees that we would have to take down.
It'd be 16 feet below, because root levels, 16 feet. That's my point. 16 feet, very deep, right? So that's my point, is people think you're going to destroy a tree when you're going well underneath any root growth. So that's my point, is I think there were some quick snap decisions on it. I'd like to see the code on that. And if it, if it is what it is, that's fine. I just, I'm just saying, the two engineers didn't meet. They didn't have a chance to talk. And somebody made a decision and ran with it without meeting the other engineer. And that's, that's my point. So is it safe to say then? We told Mr. Hurda today that he goes and pulls back pills and does what he has to do to, to take care of the septic field, which he's been waiting, so.
That's up to Oakland County, the two engineers. That is beyond any of our hands. They have to make that decision as to how that's going to work.
Why did the meeting happen? Does anybody know why the two engineers didn't meet?
I don't know.
Do we know? Could we ask president?
I haven't.
Oh.
So which engineer didn't show up? Ours?
Ours didn't.
Do we know?
I didn't arrange that as well.
You did not arrange.
But didn't we, as council, say that the direction we were going to have?
That they are to meet us.
We wanted to have the two engineers and the Oakland County senatorian meet to discuss together.
So why Oakland County?
No, Oakland County did not have to meet with them. Oakland County came out first to look at it, to tell us what our direction was.
Direction. We said we wanted to have the Oakland County senatorian to be included.
So to work with.
For that very reason, to understand that you Oakland County helped.
Correct. He came out, he told us what the requirements were, that the information was given to the two engineers, they were supposed to meet, and then direct from there. So we need to follow up them through.
Well, our motion, which we just all approved from the meeting, said that we approved row professional service engineer to work with the engineer, the property owner's engineer, and Oakland County senatorian to draft a plan for the village resident to resolve drainage issue, drainage issues. So why the senatorian was not involved?
He wasn't involved. He came out first. That's what his job is. Then he tells them what to do next. That's what happened. We want an exact order of what the procedure is. So now we're waiting for the row and the private engineers to meet together, who works for the county. And that's the next step. So if that's not, if that's the case, it was not given back to us that they did not show up. And we'll pursue that from there, and we'll see what's next.
Okay. That's, that's all I had to add for the, for the drainage.
Okay. IT computers, the IT committee met, and the two computers that are operating on the Windows 7 have to be replaced because Microsoft is no longer supporting Windows 7. So we obtained bids, and we got the best price within 20, 30 bucks with IT Wright, which is our current vendor that handles our computers now. And we will have the village manager's laptop, as well as the building officials' laptop replaced. At this point, it looks like the first week of, the first week of August, the first week of August. So I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of two HP laptops with Microsoft Suite for the village manager, the building official, with a three-year warranty, not to exceed $2,300. And as a side note, we did approve budget already up to $4,000, which does take well within the $4,000.
Do you have the specifications of those?
I do have the specifications. Do we want those in the motion?
Well, I would like to see that real quick if I could. Colleen, is $2,300 just per, per computer?
No, just total. That's for all of them. That's for them to.
It was per computer. I'd say it's to watch.
Of course.
Could you quickly just read the total amount one more time? I'm sorry.
Not to exceed $2,300. This one, in effect, from, I received our initial call from them, the one HP Pro book went out, a few bucks. Here's the two.
So, Colleen, is that the three?
Two. Building up their shop, which we didn't get, you know, or even because it's just, there's just no need for, for all bells and whistles on that, the village manager. And that will be the, and that, I think I mentioned the launch of three-year warranty, that it was, so they'll handle that. So I just want to.
The office was included on there too.
Sorry?
The office was included on there too.
Yes. Correct. We have yet to look at the equipment closet, but we'll, we'll look at that when we get a village manager. And the historical society met on July 9th. The footings and the floor have been poured for the Blacksmith's shop. So it's moving along very nicely. We are looking at fundraisers because we are still looking for money to help fund this shop. Just a guest in it, we're looking at about $20,000, but we don't know if that's actually what it's going to be. So we're about halfway there. We have about $9,700. So for anybody out there that wants to make any donations, they're certainly welcome. And any requests, those are welcome as well. And.
So do we need that motion for to?
Oh, no, we never did that.
That's what I was just going to ask. Do you want it this meeting?
Yeah, I was going to say, we still didn't do that.
Yes, I want that this meeting. Just to have on the record.
No problem. That's what I was asking. Do you want it now or on this? All right.
So I just had a question in, in that regard. Does, does the DDA support the historical?
Well, we're just going to back up on the motion real quick, on the motion.
Oh, I'm sure. Go ahead.
Do we have a motion on the table? Did you, you specifically made it?
I'll support.
I didn't know if you said you were looking for a motion of that. All right. So motion on the table, the Councilman Skornica, supported by Councilman Hayden and Liz, if he's had a little call with them now. Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Skornica?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
What's in?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. And we're going to circle back to the Blacksmith? Okay.
Yeah. So I guess my question, here in the Historical Society, they've raised X amount of dollars. They're still hurting for money. I'm thinking, okay, fundraisers, fundraisers, DDA, that's fundraisers. Does the DDA support the historical financially at all?
The DDA, I believe, has given, awarded them a grant of $1,500, I believe it was, or $1,000. But they applied for a grant, and it was my understanding that they was, they were awarded it, they just hadn't received it yet.
They've taken advantage of our merchant grant. It's a small, little grant that is provided to businesses and organizations with the DDA district. They've already received that. They've applied for our facade grant, which has not been awarded yet, but that is the $1,500 grant. And then in collaboration with the Historical Society, we've applied for a $2,500 grant through Main Street Oakland County for the project as well. We have not received that grant yet. So that's kind of a pass-through grant that comes to the DDA and directed back to the Historical Society. So a little over $4,000 is what we're hoping to get.
So it's moving, it's moving along, and we're excited and hope that we can, you know, come up with some fundraisers and earn, you know, raise the rest of that money. But certainly, it's like donations are accepted.
How close will it be by September Fest?
I'm not really sure, but of course, it's weather permitting. And a lot of these services are in-kind services. So we're kind of at the mercy on, you know, like.
I'm just glad to be available as possible. Somewhere hopefully before it gets too cold.
Please donate to our Blacksmith for that spot.
So sign waivers out there.
It's like 45.
It's going to be wonderful.
We've got to keep people visiting.
But it's on its way. It's, it's on its way, so.
Well, thank you. All right. And the only thing I have is a couple quick calendar changes. We did receive a calendar at the end of our packet. Just a reminder, the July 29th joint meeting at 7:00 PM at Hilltown Hall is not on there. But I know we've all received that information. Bring your thoughts, ideas, visions. August 22nd, the DDA meeting is at 7:30, not, I believe, the August 18th is that Monday. That was changed to the 22nd, 7:30 AM.
Can you go through it again?
Oh, sure. July 29th, joint meeting at 7:00 PM.
And where's that?
Hilltown Hall.
Oh, is there, is there a spot, is there a group on that?
That is DDA, Planning Commission, and Village Council. That's our third, I was going to say tri, yearly.
Yeah, the timeline that for the?
7:00 PM. And then the August of DDA is not the 18th, or whatever one it is. It's not the 19th, it is the 22nd, 7:30 AM at the village offices. Yes, that is in the middle of the national meeting, and unfortunately, we'll have some people. And then the October 22nd Professional Development is now the 23rd. The library is not available for that presentation, I meant the room. So it's now October 23rd, 7:00 PM at the Brandon Library. So sorry about those changes. We'll get that fixed in our next one. And I think Liz may email that in between, out as well.
Yep.
All right. And then the DDA, they've just been working away on getting some projects started for summer. And as you see, the market is just about starting and getting their wheels in motion. Had a meeting with, have some great information, it's all included in your packet. We have somebody come up from the county, so get a chance to read through them. And that's it, to our updates.
Can I have a question for the media?
Okay.
Or you? So I've read in one of the Brandon Township meeting minutes where our, our Brandon Township supervisor, Kathy Thurman, recommended the DDA work out a payment plan back to the library for the dollars in question, right? So is that moving forward, or is that just her recommendation?
What she requested is the two of them continue to talk about what their agreement would be. She didn't make a suggestion. The DDA and the library have been in contact back and forth and they're working on what their agreement that they're going to come up with. Nothing I don't think is completed at this point between...
What I got from the minutes was that they apparently had come up with a proposal to pay back overtime, but the library board rejected it and I wasn't sure what the status was after that. That's why I signed up to let the latest meetings in our packet here.
So what was that proposal?
To pay back over, well, maybe back of those.
I think do we...
Do you have any update on where that TIF capture situation is?
If you're referring about the proposal we submitted, it was a partnership proposal. It was a non-monetary proposal to have them participate in our partnership program for two years. They're not inside the DDA, but it would allow them some access to some of the DDA programs for two years as well. They rejected that and we have not come to any initial agreement. But, full disclosure, when they rejected that, they submitted a request to the township to withhold DDA TIF funds for a period of five years and pay us back, or pay them back that way. And that's when the supervisor rejected that, saying the DDA and the library have to come to an agreement.
So the dialogue is continuing at this point?
Thank you.
May I just circle back? Tyler, you mentioned about the joint meeting being held at Old Town Hall.
Yes.
And why is it at Old Town Hall rather than library at this time?
Well, we're trying to do as much as possible at the Old Town Hall, but the reason why the others are at the library, the Professional Development, is because we don't have the technology to use the Old Town Hall.
No, the meeting.
Because we're trying to use, I mean, keep it in our village to use the Old Town Hall.
Oh.
And it was because we didn't have the technology for that other one at the time. What they needed to utilize, the projector and everything, that was why. But we don't need it at this point. Was there a wish?
Because I thought there was something that was said that the library charges for the groups.
Not us.
Okay, which I...
Right.
Okay, because I thought that they came off.
Okay. Right. I don't know which groups they do and don't, but not for the Old Town Township. Right. All right, and if not, you could do, I know senior center, something along that lines, but like I said, the library has the technology that we need for those others. All right. Now we're moving on to our new business.
I just have one more question. Matt, are you having a public meeting tomorrow at the Town Hall for DDA?
Wednesday morning.
Oh, Wednesday morning? Not at noon, but a... Seven-thirty.
Would you mind, may I step in up and, I'm sorry, I didn't share that either. Thank you for catching that.
I think it was in a citizen, right? Yeah, okay, but I saw that on the sheets too.
It's an opportunity for the DDA to talk to business owners, community groups, residents about some of the DDA programs, but it is also a meeting that was first held last September in conjunction with Main Street Oakland County. They're doing it again this summer where they're coming into the Main Street Oakland County communities and they're calling it a listening session where they want to hear directly from the people in the community about the retail climate. Primarily their objective. And they're gonna unveil, and I'm gonna help share some information about a program that is the result of last year's listening session. They use the listening, the feedback and the data they get from the listening sessions to develop additional program, Main Street Oakland County program. So we'll be able to unveil one Wednesday morning.
Seven-thirty AM, Old Town Hall?
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty AM to eight-thirty AM. One oh one out. I set your alarm. And there might be something to eat.
I could wait for some.
Oh, I don't know. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Good catch. All right, anything else for the trustees? All right. While waiting, that would be Liz's.
Every year, the communities from Oakland County receive funding from SMART for transportation. And since we don't have transportation, we utilize the senior center transportation anyways, just defer those funds to the Brandon Township. So this is the contract for 2020 and to transfer those funds over to Brandon Township for use for the senior center and for the rent.
Can I ask what the split is on that?
I don't have what other communities get. Our community is entitled to, I believe it was fourteen-hundred eighty dollars this year.
So how much of that goes to the senior center and then how much of that goes to the park and recs?
I do not have this year's numbers and last year, I do not, let's see. I have a project description from last year, but not like...
So I guess my point is it's SMART, it has to do with transportation, the SMART bus transportation for senior centers. It seems to me like the majority of it should be going to the senior center, so it surprised me to see that it's going to parks and recs as well, and that's why I asked.
Let me see if I can find what, I think they used it last year for like trips to...
The busing or the skiing.
Yeah, skiing.
That's what it was.
Oh, ski clubs?
Yeah, I remember we talked about, why don't they rent a school bus?
I think they used to.
I mean, that's what I, that's what I, I've always known ski clubs, you know, they get a school bus and go, then all of this wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to set that aside and find, they're all using our busing system.
Yeah, to me, it seems to me like it's a very small amount and once you split it up and you're taking away from seniors who need that transportation over recreation, it seems to me like the majority, if not all of it, should go to our senior center for transportation. That's my...
I don't know what the split, I mean, I remember talking about the ski club.
Well, Brandon Township last year received fifty-three thousand, two-hundred forty-eight dollars for their transportation.
And how much of that went to recreation?
I don't have...
Is that something you can get for us?
I can't.
Because if the majority of that or half of that was split, then I don't know that we should be splitting the recreation, being that we have such a small amount.
Okay. I'm happy to do that.
Is this something that you can table till next meeting?
What is our timeframe?
I think we have it, I think we have it for a few, several months if I was reading. Yeah.
I think this is just stating that we're gonna transfer our... Does it designate a split in here?
We do designate that they use it with the rec department and the senior center.
So I make a motion that we table this till next meeting.
That's right.
Pending, yeah, that information.
So you're gonna give the Brandon Township split as well as ours? On where our dollars, how our dollars would be?
You want Brandon Town, how Brandon Township uses their money too?
That's a significant amount of money.
Okay. And who would be with support? You make the motion, Dan, support it?
I supported it, yes.
Did I? All right, so, pending the information that is tabled till next month and the motion on the table is by Councilman Scornica, supported by Councilman Eshman, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, six-zero. Next up is the Metro Act Right Away.
This is something that I will confess I'm not very familiar with because the last time it was renewed, I was not employed here at the time. So I do know that we receive funds for the right way. I'm not sure, Beth, do you know how much we receive and how those monies are used?
I know how much we got last year. We get, we get about five thousand dollars every year. So last year it was five thousand, one sixty-seven thirty-eight.
Well, I actually did take a look and through this and went out to that Michigan.gov site and looked through that Metro Extension Act and it seems like this is something that the state set up to facilitate the contracts within the right ways for communities in Michigan. And so it seems like this is just something pretty routine. The state collects fees based upon certain standard calculations and then those apparently get refunded or reimbursed back to the communities. But it's just, it's just to facilitate, make it easier for these contracts or communication carriers with rights on there.
So it would be nice to know how we use those dollars. Right. Should we have that identified or not?
I'm sorry.
Oh.
Oh, how do we use those funds or what account do those funds go into?
They go, they have, we have a revenue account that's called metro funds.
Just comes into our general fund then?
Yeah.
And so there is no specific designation of where to use those monies, when they come in?
Just a general fund revenue. Correct.
Yep. Thank you.
I make a...
Go ahead, Terry.
Okay, I make a motion to approve renewal of Metro Act Right Away permit from through communication, takes part in 122.15, and authorize the village clerk to sign the extension agreement.
That's right.
Motion on the table, the Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Eshman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six-zero. Thank you very much.
The next item is the Edward Street discussion that was started based on a citizen that was kind of concerned about the street from Edward to the school entrance. Had a chance to talk with man outlaw at the schools and we have turned in a request that Bob had created and the approximate cost on that is going to be twenty-three eleven, twenty-five. And we have a verbal approval, we do not have anything written and returned yet from that outlaw that they will take half of that, so we will be responsible for half, they will be responsible for half. So what I'm looking for on that is a motion for us to approve our half, not to exceed, and then the process can begin when we receive the check from the school.
I don't understand what work's being done.
The, well, there will be repair of Edward Street from Darcy Drive to the end of the street where the school entrance actually is, the end of the sidewalk would be to where it goes to. So they'll be six to eight feet wide in that area. It will take approximately six loads of chopping, four buckets of the tap code, two yards of millings and seventy-five hours from DPW. Total includes our labor and that comes to the twenty-three eleven and twenty-five cents.
Twenty-three eleven is two thousand three hundred twelve dollars.
The total, yes. That's our total. We are responsible for half, the school's responsible for half.
Could you forward that on to us, of what that proposal is?
Sure.
I'm gonna get it handled then, okay.
Yep, so what we're looking for, like I said, is a...
And it's just patched and our guys are gonna do it?
Correct, yes.
Similar to what they've been doing at some of the other streets when they've...
It'll look like Trump Street. This is slated to be two projects in. Our last year's project was held up to this year, this project will be then held up to at least next year with the drainage issue that's obviously not going to happen next year, so this is a couple years off. So this was the best fit band-aid at this point. And as I said, that is only two residents and the rest is school bus traffic, so we thought that that would be a fair way to come to having medium between the two entities. So that's where we're at with that.
How many houses there, two?
Two, yep. And it is all our property, there will be no patching, obviously, on school property. They don't need it. There's as often as...
Other than school traffic, there's no other residents that would utilize that portion of the street there other than school traffic. So it's not like, you know, other streets where you might only have two residents, but you got a lot of other resident traffic there either.
So, that's about it.
Do we have an ally from the school at all, the municipal, do we have an ally, a letter of intent signed?
No, we don't. He does not, he already, like I said, gave, whoops, same time, approval pending that we turn this in, this was turned in to him.
Right.
So he needs to get approval from...
He does not need approval because it's under his allow. He's already, can do that on his own. We just have to wait for the check to be cut.
If we don't get the letter, then we don't do it, right?
Correct, because it's gonna be all about the checking.
Yep.
Well, we would then have the option to go back to it. There's, like I said, there's no reason we're not...
Yeah, it's like, it's actually... You're on Streets Committee, right?
Yeah, it was not, but we're...
No, because that falls within the amount, it's a small amount, so it doesn't have to be approved by anything, that's something that would just be done. But we have to approve the purchase.
Right, no, I'm just saying, Dan being on Streets to be aware of that, that's all.
So it's six to eight feet wide by how long?
From Darcy to the school property. There'll be multiple patches in there and then the millings laid on the side where they, it's puddled and it's pooled, where the water's sitting on the edges from the river.
How far past that last house does that go, do you know?
You'll see the sidewalk, where the sidewalk ends, that's the school. And you'll see, theirs is cement and ours is asphalt, so you can see the difference as to where it's...
I drove down the...
Yeah, you really have to go and look at it, but you'll see the sidewalk dead ends and the road changes.
Is this gonna address that drainage issue where the water pools on?
That's the plan, that's why he's talking about putting, he's grounding the sides and he's adding all the millings in there to raise that, so where somebody pulls out.
Correct, there it will...
That's, that's the goal. And obviously too, you can do the road completely, that's the band-aid at this point.
It may be simple dollars, but, I mean, it doesn't say anything about addressing in the first, there you did ask the right question about the drainage issue that's actually potentially causing that. From what I know about patchwork, it's only limited, it only lasts for so long and you're right back patching and just like it's in front of mine, I'll say patch it every year, multiple times a year, right? So I'm just, I'm concerned we're throwing money in there, that's not really gonna address the problem.
Look, Edward Street is on the plan within the next few years to get moved on anyway, so this is...
It's supposed to be this year.
...to get to the proper...
It may be on the plan, it's full priority due to the traffic. There are other streets that have a much higher concentration of traffic, significantly Mill Street, it's fallen apart. Halfway up the hill, it's fallen apart. So...
Well, according to the land that we have of the streets and the need, this is on the plan for nineteen twenty. And that will not happen...
Two thousand twenty?
Nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Oh.
That will not happen because we haven't completed last year's, which is worse than this one, so that's moved up years, so that was the point. So the conversation...
And we have an additional split project that we have to...
Right. And so the conversation with Bob was, at least, what do you think this'll get? He says, I'm hoping maybe three years. That's the goal, is to get us to that point, something has to be done. There is a crater in the middle of it and get that fixed and like I said, we are able to get, you know, everything to fix at this point to where we need to be to take it to the next level.
So what happens if it goes beyond the dollars that are quoted here? Who picks up that cost and will also split that?
Well, if there is something that comes up, then...
Twenty-five hours is not a whole lot of time.
It's seventy-five.
Seventy-five, well, twenty-five per person, but...
So, well, this is the quote that we received and this is what, you know, that we work within and I fully trust our DPW, they know what they're doing, they're working on it every day.
It's more about making sure that we're covered with the school, that if it does, if it increases that, that, you know, we receive the check for the fifty percent of it, that if it exceeds that amount...
This is under the amount that I quoted him to begin with when we had the conversation.
So what is, what do we do, stop the work once, once we get to that limit? I guess my point is asking, just making sure, okay, if they are truly partners, wanna take care of it, they go beyond that, are they gonna split the additional costs?
Well, I don't know, that's a conversation we can have, but it's no different than we receive any grant. This is the amount that they're giving us, this is what we have to work with, we can go from there. If we choose to request more, that's, that's a choice that we can make. This is what it's going to cost, this is our estimate, this is our amount, this is what we requested from them.
But I just think that in our, in our communication with them, that it, you know, that it could, it could be more, just to, you know, we would keep them posted if it's more than they, you know, we would expect a fifty percent.
I don't know if we can expect that. This is what they have, this is what we have requested them to pay, this is what they're gonna pay. If you ask for a grant... If you ask for a grant and we go over, we go over. There's nothing that they pay into.
In the communication that we sent about that it was, that it wasn't a diehard number other than right now we have, but it has the potential of being more, did we cover ourselves in that communication?
At the same time though, I think the school didn't have to offer anything for that.
Oh, agreed.
So I think that, you know, we have to kind of accept that they're willing to at least go half of this for this amount and then if it does go over, then we can talk to them about whether they're willing to give it any more.
And I just think the communication at the front end rather than the back end to be more proactive that, you know, this is the amount that we have, we don't expect it, but should it go over, are you still in for the fifty percent match?
So you'd prefer to do something like, hey, okay, if we know that this is this and even with added like say ten percent over or whatever, this would be the maximum and then, you know, forget some contingency stuff and then say, okay, would you split the maximum?
And we all know when we hire a contractor and they give us an estimate and says this is what it would've been costing, they come back after the project's done and they say, oh, by the way, it costs, you know, seventy hundred dollars more. You're like, whoa. I mean, you're kind of like knowing going in what your expectation is and have that defined and have that door open at the onset rather than at the, when it's been completed. That's, that's all.
And we can ask them when we're signing the contract. I'm very grateful for what they're giving us. I'm not looking to give the horse in the mouth and I think we should do the project with the money that we've been given and not go back and ask for more. But if that's the case, that's what you'd like to see in a contract, we can do that.
I think, sure, the cost, even if it's a little more, I think it's, it's definitely something that is needed and it would address the one residence concern that raises this point. I think it would be worth us spending money even if it goes a little bit over that, in a sense, I have a very agreeance. I'm appreciative the school's willing to do what they are and if it does run over, we could talk to them if they're willing to, you know, split any overtures.
I'm appreciative of what they're doing as well. I just wanted it noted, going, you know, to him at the onset. It's a lot easier sometimes to go in with the complete understanding of something, right? Their eyes wide open, but at the end, that's the point I'm trying to make.
So maybe, maybe we should have Bob just document his hours so we understand what the total cost is, so we understand if there are overdues, we understand what those are. All right.
I would think another way to look at it would just be just add up to forty-six hundred dollars, just prioritize on that roll or what, what's the area of greatest need, fix that verse.
That's a good point too. That's a very good point.
You know, as long as the materials don't go over, if it's a matter of extra hours, I mean, it just means a few fewer hours for them to do some of the other things. But I suppose it depends on what their priorities are for their work. Because it's not really a true extra cost as long as they're not putting in overtime for that.
Right, we're paying them to show to work regardless.
Yeah, so I mean, if it's extra hours on their part, but we don't go over materials, then, you know, we could probably absorb the labor costs without really any impact in our real budget for a second.
Then this will be done before the school year if approved, so we're out of the way, so they can have it to their foot. So that was their concern, basically.
So do you wanna make a motion? Half of that would be one thousand one hundred and fifty-five. I might say we might be prudent to round that to not to exceed one thousand two hundred just to. Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the DPW to do repair on Edward Street with an amount not to exceed one thousand two hundred dollars.
Is that what it is?
For a portion of the.
Twenty-three total, twenty-three eleven.
Oh, I see.
Twenty-three total, the school's.
Okay, thank you.
With a, not to exceed one thousand two hundred dollars, our share of the pass.
And that's the, to define Edward Street between Darcy Drive and the cul-de-sac of Edwards or is that going up to the driveway of the school?
To the end of our.
To the end of the village.
Or to be in the school property.
Own portion of the road.
What he said was to the end of the street.
Which is where the buses sit, right? Once they come, well, no, they're sitting there.
Yes.
Well, when you think about it, that portion is primarily used by buses. I mean, two residents.
Two residents coming down isn't wearing down the road.
Schools, they don't give people.
That makes a motion on the table. Do you have support?
Support.
All right. Motion made by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman George. And Liz, can I have a little call on that please? Score call?
I, for it, I just would just like, with the understanding with the, with the school, I mean, just, we didn't open it, I would be more comfortable if we had something in with the school.
Do you not know any in the motion? No, I can amend it.
So it's for the discussion, really, it should be tracked, we should, we need to track the, we need to track the materials. Okay, if it's hours and we're not doing significant overtime hours, that would add to our, but still we gotta track the materials anyways.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I made the motion, so if you want to amend the motion, you can make a motion to amend the motion.
Right. Yeah, I can just. I guess I'd still just love to have it be proactive rather than reactive and just have something in there.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think.
But you don't think it's gonna be that much more?
Yeah, I can't see how we can, you know, make an agreement upfront with the school at this point without a fear to buy in on it. So I think that we would either have to table it and talk to them.
And hopefully this isn't, this isn't gonna address.
Delay is getting started if you want to have a.
Great. And this isn't gonna address the, the drainage issue, so we're hoping, keep our fingers crossed, that it will last us until we do Edward Street. Support, or, yes? Bryce?
Yes.
Lexon?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
All right, and next up is the special meetings review. We've had conversations with residents, business owners as well, questioning these special meetings that we've had. And I got a chance to do a little bit of research and we've had eleven special meetings in seven months. Two thousand eighteen, we only had three special meetings. Two was for litigation and one was for a grant approval. In two thousand nineteen, we've had five for the master plan, which is a total of eighteen seventy-five. We've had one to review the policies and, or receive the policies and procedures, which cost three seventy-five. One to review the policies and procedures on IT and the manager duties and that cost three seventy-five. We had one to discuss the president's policy of resources on the personnel committee, the manager search and the trash hauling and that cost three seventy-five. So council has spent three thousand dollars on special meetings so far this year. That doesn't include Beth and Liz posting, preparing the agendas, the minutes for each and every meeting, the phones, the email communication, et cetera, to prep. DPW to deliver these trustee informations, the lawyer's fees due to the lack of our following the policies and procedures, and so that's another couple hundred dollars. What I would like to do is, is I would like to apologize to our residents for the money that's being spent. I would also like to remind all of us that our job is to provide the best possible public services defined by the citizens in the most efficient manner. When our citizen feedback is they're not happy with this, we really need to evaluate this. It doesn't follow our sworn duties to our village. Multiple residents are not happy with us and this is an ineffective meeting. I request minute stops, please, and I request that we continually work on being fiscally responsible.
So I'd like to comment to that. To me, special meetings are the cost of doing business. If we're here representing our village residents and as council as a whole, right? And we follow the, the rules as governed by the, by the laws and that being, okay, president can call a special meeting or three or more council trustees can call a special meeting and if the special meetings are important to protect our residents and making sure that we have a full understanding of what decisions are being made, why those decisions are being made, when those decisions are being made. Today, we find out we still don't have a village manager set up. How long is it gonna take? All right, so from that perspective, the cost of doing business will be a little bit more when we have gaps such as a missing village manager. If someone were to go back and find out the additional cost above and beyond the special meetings to each one of the trustees, maybe even you, Tanya, the cost would be significantly more. So is it relative to the missing manager? Maybe, probably. It's a cost of doing business when you don't have a manager. That's why we need to get a manager and we need to get a manager quick.
An appropriate qualified manager, absolutely.
Yes.
And I believe that has been our goal as in every other time. We are nowhere near the timeframe that we've been on looking for last managers. It's not something that we're going to push somebody in, it's something that we're going to continue to search. This last round, unfortunately, there wasn't anybody except the one that met all the qualifications and so we're right back at the beginning. We can't create something that's not there.
Well, we had two weeks where there was something being done. There was, it was, I don't, there wasn't any posting, there wasn't any interviews.
Well, my question would be, I, I thought on candidates that have been interviewed that we do have an acceptable person or two right, right from there. I think we're gonna come up with that topic in the next session.
Okay.
So that would be.
My only thing to have a special meeting, Tanya, I would, just in my limited experience here, you know, I, I think with Dan, I felt somewhat crippled without him, what I had built here. I think there'd be a lot of questions we'd have to answer. Points of procedure on a meeting, I think Bill would be real good to have. We don't. So anyway, my feeling now is, and I don't, I hear what you're saying maybe prior to Bill leaving, but I think what I've built here, I almost feel in order to keep things moving, that we do meet every other week. That's just my personal thought. And then because it's gonna force us to keep things moving, if we're meeting once a month and we don't have a village manager, just since Bill's been gone, it's been demoralizing to me that, you know, I sense that people said, when you don't have a village manager, things come to a standstill. I guess that's what I'm feeling starting to have.
What do you feel has come to a standstill?
Well, for one thing, the, the search thing, I was really hoping that we would have a village manager in place. I'm just discouraged by the time it's been.
Absolutely, we all are. And then this is the struggle that we have. We, we had somebody grade in and unfortunately took a great job and it's gonna be hard to replace them, so we need to work on that. I personally think a huge thing is, is our, what we're offering for money, it's nothing, it's peanuts. Everybody that we've interviewed, look at us and think, oh my goodness, but what can we afford? It's a whole other story. It's an argument, you know, a fair equal argument.
But I'm just saying again, because of that, I guess, at this point in time, sometimes these special meetings are, I almost want to say unnecessary, but I think they're helpful. Instead of waiting once a month to meet, we are meeting, we're very, very discussed issues. That's just my opinion.
You know, my understanding is that not too long ago, we had two meetings a month, not since I've been here, but we had two meetings a month plus we had special meetings. So as, from a taxpayer point of view, which we all are here, and residents, I don't wanna say it's washed because I don't have those numbers, but I'm gonna say it's pretty close. I do find that in special meetings, generally, they're there to get something done. And sometimes it's, it's easier to have one or two topics on a special meeting with the council as full as we can be and nail something down, get it off of the plate and move to yet more important matters. So as far as spending money and time, I don't, I don't buy, we're throwing money away. We're, we're taking our time to do this and that's worth, my time is worth a lot more money than obviously what we're making, which is nothing. And, but I do say, I do think when we, it's going on nine o'clock, we've been here for two hours. We still have some more meat to get in here and we're gonna be here, that's our job. We all took, we were voted in to do it and there may be some people out there that don't like some of us and that's gonna happen, but there's also quite a few people that do like us and they think we're doing a good job because I hear it on the screen, so.
I don't think it's anything personal, I think it's just worrying about their taxpayer money and I think just making sure we're vigilant and, and we are paying attention. You're effective when you come in and you're prepared for a meeting, you have the meeting. To have a meeting to say, what are our procedures and to give that list of procedures and spend three hundred and seventy-five dollars is ridiculous. That's something that an email can go out. To say, hey, what's the manager update? That's an email that goes out and says, hey, has anything changed since we just decided two weeks ago what our next step is? Nothing's changed. So that was very ineffective. And no offense, but the garbage is on this agenda, therefore it's on this agenda. It already was on there. So what's two weeks going to do? Nothing. We're still going to have the same exact date. So to have a three hundred and seventy-five dollar meeting to ask a couple of questions that can be done phone or email is not effective for the residents. And when we get those frustrations from them, okay, what can we do to solve that and how can we do a next step?
It may not be that transparent either because they're not privy to my emails. They're privy to showing up, asking questions like some people do and maybe a lot more would like to do, they just don't get involved. I don't have any, you know, I make five hundred dollars a meeting every time I come here. I don't know about you guys, but.
You make how much?
We're all really making. We're just, we're just trying to do what's right.
You wanna just make it, you wanna change that real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I was being facetious, okay? It's not a five hundred dollars a meeting.
But, well, just one other thing to think about is we are not paying a village manager right now, so the offset of what we're not paying a village manager, okay, special meetings happen when a village manager's not here. That just hurt.
And you're paying Liz and Beth extra to do all the extra work, you're paying to be in the office, you're paying possibly Bob to be doing overtime extra. So it is being spent.
When we have special meetings, there's not packets that are delivered, so there's no reason for DPW, there's no packet.
We appreciate packets for.
They are, yes, they are. But just point being that that is something that is brought up and something that was addressed, it's something that needs to be thought of and considered and addressed.
I think we could, oh, we could prove that. If we, if we get some better communication, then we, you know, we would, we would need to do that, but right now, it's like the communication, when somebody asks a question through, you know, another form of communication, then it's halted, I know you can't do that, you know, violation of OMA, it's just asking a question. So I think we need to be mindful of that too, so not to be mindful of those questions.
I would like to also share my view. I'm kind of in between both those because I do feel also that we have not been as efficient as we should at some of the special meetings. I think like, for example, the master plan, I recall at least one where when we came in for the meeting at seven o'clock, we had people say, well, we can't go past eight thirty. And as you can see right now, we're already, we're already approaching two hours. Our meeting, you know, our, our rules, procedures say we put a stop on meetings at three hours and that's reasonable because after three hours, I think people's brains are shot. Mine, oh mine is, but I think that we owe it to, to our citizens, residents, to when we do call a special meeting, to make sure that we can take as much time as we can during those meetings. And I think we probably could've shaved that one of those planning, the master plan review meetings off if we had been a little more efficient at some of our other meetings with the master plan. So I think we maybe could've done a little more efficient by that, by just taking more time to be better prepared, thoroughly review materials prior to meetings and taking the time, you know, not calling meetings short, but taking the full time that we are allotted to cover as much as we can. We've also had meetings where we postponed agenda items and tabled them and I think at that meeting when we tabled our, our larger agenda items, we also had a meeting that concluded in about an hour and a half. So we would have had more time to address more of those topics at that meeting if we not tabled them upfront. So I think that we can improve on how we are calling and managing those special meetings. At the same time, I do agree that we do need to have extra rooms with a special manager. It's important that we have special rooms. It is the right of any three council members to call a special meeting if there is serious concern. I think it might help if we can try to all keep in mind as a council that we are all here and elected to serve the residents. And it's just like, if I'm at my regular work and I'm expecting to be presenting or involved in an important meeting with my company, I would expect that my boss would not find it acceptable for me to say, oh, I wasn't prepared, we'll have to postpone it. So I think that we all need to be mindful of that, and make sure we are well-prepared for all of our meetings. And at the same time, also keep in mind that all of us ran for these elected positions because we care about our community, and we want to do what we think is right for the best of the interest of the community. We may not agree on what that is. That's expected, we mean that we have disagreements. But as our roles as trustees and council members, we need to keep in mind that all of us are here because we care about the community, and we really do wanna do what's best. And I think if we can keep that in mind and not let discussions get too contentious and try to work together, as opposed to letting those, you know, that passion that we have for the community turn into conflict, I think we can be more productive at our meetings, if we can find better ways to communicate and be civil about it, and try to ensure that we, you know, keep in mind that everybody here cares about the community, wants to do the best. And that's really our goal, is to do our best for the community. And so we all need to do our best to try to make all of these meetings as productive and as possible, and go in that direction.
All right, next up, we have our unfinished business. And the first thing is our master plan approval. A reminder that Thursday, July 25th at 7:00 PM at the village offices will be the review for the draft. Everybody has the corrected maps that they've received this evening. So have a chance to check those over.
Can I schedule that as a meeting, not a workshop, just in case you're ready to move on to the next step?
As long as everything lines up with what we reviewed and sent to McKenna. And the reason we're having this additional special meeting is because village manager's no longer here, and he did not make sure that the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed with what village council approved to move forward with changes.
So with the Florida, that on July 25th? I hope we can get through it in three hours.
Liz, our deadline is February 1st?
For the Parks and Rec?
Yes. We have to have our master plan completed, the sixty-three or four days. Back the master plan for the Parks and Rec completed and back by February 1st.
Correct. Or we cannot apply for any grants.
Correct. Okay. So seeing that we've had this since February, pretty sure we can be diligent in making sure that our homework is done. And we have our last concerns on July 25th.
As long as the changes are correct.
All right. Bring your hammer. We have it all ready.
Yeah.
All right, so the interim staff pay increase will be tabled until our manager is here. Mill Street drain, we've addressed. The trash hauling ordinance.
We're set. I know on the last meeting we had, we did get approval. I think Shelby thinks we put the article in there. Bottom line is, we're going to Monday, and you let the people know, I think that, and that's it. I'll drop any further discussion on the trash hauling. I have a little attempt just going Monday. As far as fees, we've got township, Oregon Township, Golden Township, all terms of trash haulers being pleased. And the 200 registration, I said 250 and 125. 200, 100 is probably a better number. But it's out there, and we're not the first people to do it. And the trash hauls are completely on that. So 200 to register initially, $100 every year, just to keep tabs on and make sure things are okay. That's it.
I know we asked the last meeting, did you have the breakout of who pays what around us? Can I get an idea of what's...
I know this much. I know that in general, any pennies township, Oregon, Golden Township, are around $200 on the registration, $100. Basically, when I say $100, most of them are charged by the truck on the licensing, $30 a truck. So we got typically in our dollars, we get about three trucks per hauler, so that's $100. I don't wanna beat 400 trucks.
And by the villages, did you get any?
No. And you've gotta remember also on that, that they're going, they're going with single haulers and that. But all I'm saying on that, Tanya, is you can take one if you want. Right now, I will settle for my own personal satisfaction compromise of just getting it to Monday and getting approval, council for that, and getting it out to the public. Liz had recommended a September 1st start, I think, I go along with that 100%. And I'll help write the letters to the three or four current vendors that we have, sign those, kinda need to update them, I'll be available. And if I had to make the calls and things like that for...
I've talked to two verbally, but not the other two. They just wanted an update after the meeting on Monday, and I said everything's good with the September 1st, they have no problem with that.
Exactly. So I just feel this thing, let's, yeah, let's just be done with it. So if worst case scenario for me, we've got the Monday on the books that we've already approved, I can live with that.
Excellent.
We'll drop the whole thing about limiting the number of haulers, that's off the table. And as far as the registration fee and annual licensing fee, that's up there. So we'll just approve that. But I don't wanna beat that to death. That's a, that's a, that's a low number, but it's a valid number, it's in the ballpark. So if we, if we wanna go with that, that's fine. If we wanna table the fees and the registration piece or whatever, that's fine. We got the big piece of it out, which is Monday. I'll go with that.
My only thought with that, yes, we can. I would love to see what villages are doing, but we would create an ordinance. We would work on that. We would give it to the lawyer who would charge us for that, would come back to us, who would create again.
I'll...
Will those fees equal that in a year? It's just a simple question. I'm not, I'm not in any way telling you no. I bet I'm not.
No, I just, I just say at this point, Tanya, I just think just get it out to the haulers Monday start.
Because this is a separate, you can still do this at separate.
It's not, it's the money involved, and that's how we're thinking. I'm like, all right. We got the Monday already on the books, and that's good enough. We get the letters out, tell them that it's happening, and I'm okay with that.
No, I've been okay with it. I mean, it's just...
As long as our ordinances are up to date, and what the changes can impede.
I think that, I think they should pay for a little bit of patch though, with that $200 registration. Some of that patch, that works three, two, so, that's it. But I say it's up to council. We're not gonna, we're not gonna break anybody's heart or insult any trash hauler by coming up with a $200 registration, $100 annual fee.
This assumes that the ordinance is written up to date by the September 1st deadline you're talking about?
Well, right now, right now, what we approved on that, Dan, was we approved the Monday pickup. So we are...
Well, we approved it, but it's still gotta be written into the ordinance, right? And has that been done?
It's been published in the newspaper.
Okay.
So the public has been notified, and it's just amending the ordinance, so it's a done deal.
Then you'd be right first. Then you'd be the other one.
We can stop right there if you want.
We're good. Yep, I just wanted to double check.
And we have not sent a letter officially to the haulers until we saw what the rest would entail, before we saw it, I don't know. All right, so what's the thoughts on that? Are we good where we're at?
Are we continuing? I think we're good where that, where we're at. And when our new village manager comes on board, he can pick up and get the letter out.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna start Monday pickups on September.
Yeah, well, I, yeah. The village manager, the letter will go out this week. So we're all set with that.
That's fine, that's good.
So we're onto the village manager status, then?
Where's the next week?
And as we have kind of already discussed, that was our last round of resumes, and that's where we're at with that. So any thoughts, ideas?
My thoughts, my thoughts still are, I think, based on what the personnel committee has referred to us in candidates, and the vet process that they've gone through. I'll speak just personally for myself. I've seen a candidate or two that I would say is okay, without going any farther. The thing where we have to now go back to the cradle on this and start all over again, my honest feeling is, personally, it's not necessary from my standpoint. I've seen a person or two that I would, I would be comfortable in that position, and I'll let go of that.
I would say the same thing for myself.
Okay.
So that being said...
I'd be ready to vote tonight on the new manager.
So that being said, I'd like to recommend that we go in a closed session to discuss the status of a page which we have already had, and to review as council, a proposal, a potential proposal on an existing candidate that gives council seat bits to follow up on. That was a motion. I would support that.
All right, who's supporting that? Pat Lutz?
Trustee, trustee.
We're gonna go with Mark, I think.
Allow us to...
It's the yellow way, Mark, George. All right, all in favor?
No, we have a roll call.
Roll call, presents, yes, roll call.
Who is the support? Was it George or Lutz?
It was trustee.
Sorry, I messed you up. Bryce? Yes.
Watsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Skornica?
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero.
So we will go into closed session at 9:00 PM.
Amanda?
Yep.
Nate?
Got everyone's...
We're paying attention to our meeting, we're just getting to the room. So where we're going, maybe...
Support board.
All right, 9:12, we're trying to open session.
Kind of do a roll call still. Make sure nobody's straight.
Hold on. All right, Liz, may I have a roll call vote, Amanda, please? Watsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Skornica?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, six zero.
I'd like to make a motion that we hire Dale Stewart as our village manager.
Support board.
Motion, my councilman Skornica, supported by Ashman Lutz.
And I suggest that we recess to make a phone call, to make an offer.
All right, all in favor of the motion for Dale Stewart? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unless we have a problem.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, no. All right, and then the recommendation to recess?
Wait, no. You don't need a motion to recess, do you?
And that is at 9:13?
I have possession of my phone.
And I think I have to look at my mine, because mine's on the car. Anyone else have theirs on?
Mine's at home.
Mine's at home, yeah, mine's in my phone, but I just...
I got my phone.
I got it right here.
You got a phone?
I got a phone.
Call would be good. There you go.
Do we have yours?
Oh. Um, do I have my one?
Phone.
No.
Oh.
I have this thing. And I... No, I don't, I just, it's not on here, because I like... He has everything on here with that.
I have his phone number?
Yeah.
Oh.
Liz?
I don't have it, actually.
Yeah, I was gonna say in our email it is, but I just, I guess I was looking for paper.
I probably have it in my email.
I did put my phone, do not disturb, so...
And this is supposed to be our first E, I can get someone for that, too. You should look it up.
So I just...
You have to call it?
Dale Stewart, A Stewart in Cloviston.
Oh, okay. No, it is, I got a cell phone.
Here, I've got his resume in my folder here somewhere.
It's in my...
Do you think that's a cell phone?
Six two five, probably not.
No, it's still there.
It might be one still, but...
Yeah.
Focus home.
If that's all we got, that's good enough to start with. I think Liz will bring it up here.
His cell is 248-420-2710. And the 625-0918 is a home number.
It was the same one?
Yeah.
You could, you should... 0918. Tanya, you could text him first. No, let's let him go.
Tell him, tell him to call.
Well, he's, I was kidding, I never pick up if I don't have a contact.
Oh, I think, he doesn't usually pick up anyway. He usually calls like the next day. And it does, you know, bedtime.
Well, come in. Are you sure?
Don't do it two hours time when we're on these meetings. Hello, Dale?
Yes?
This is Tanya Bryce from the village of Hortonville, how are you?
Good.
Do you like that we call you so late at night, wake you up?
We didn't wake you up.
That's a council's... Wonderful. I just wanted to let you know that we are in the council meeting. We have taken a recess, and we're all on the phone with you. We wanted to see if we could have extended an offer to you for the position of the village manager of Hortonville.
Okay.
What we are looking at is a $60,000 with a $3,600 quarterly stipend.
No, yearly.
I'm sorry, yearly. It is paid out quarterly.
Yes.
Thank you for catching that. Paid out quarterly. $20 a month, I'm sorry.
Yearly stipend for what?
The yearly stipend, is it wellness stipend?
Oh.
And that... Go right ahead.
Should we use that at your discretion, right?
How about some medical expenses?
It's not specific.
We don't have to do that.
Okay, so you said $60,000?
Yes, as the base salary.
And $3,600 as a...
Yearly wellness. Yes, for wellness. $20 a month for a phone, which is to pay for your phone, and we just give you the $20 stipend each month.
Okay.
Yes. $100 a month stipend is basically a mileage, you know, driving around, checking out ordinances, things like that, everything you're gonna be doing in town for us, because you're busy. And then we also have with, are you... Vacation?
Also, I just wanted to bring up that it's like the stipend that's after the probationary period, and, you know, and the next payout, it's available the next payout after probationary period. Right? And then, and then vacation time.
So with the vacation, it will start with a two-week vacation from year one to five, and then it steps up from there.
Okay.
And just a reminder, I know you mentioned, or questioning whether it was maybe a contractor or an at-will, and just to remind you, we are an at-will employer. And it's full-time.
I think that's what's missing.
Yes, definitely, it's full-time.
Okay.
What other questions do you have for us as we're coming up with it right now?
Nothing that I can think of right now. I may have to make them up of something.
Absolutely.
What's your phone number, Ryan, might read you?
And we will extend the offer in writing.
Tanya?
Tanya.
Bryce?
Bryce?
Yes. And would you like us to email the offer?
Sure.
All right, well, I don't know if he wants it, we'll email, how he wants it. All right, so we can do that, and go ahead and do that this evening?
So your meeting is emailed?
We are, right now.
Oh.
That was our, that was our decision at this exact moment, hot off the press.
Okay.
What email would you like me to use?
Stewart Dale six. Stewart, Dale, six.
S T U A R T, right?
Right.
D A L E. All right.
That's, that's also on background, background, you know.
And that's D A L E, right? For Dale?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure that you didn't spell it different. And, um, hold on, we did have...
The six is the number six.
Yes. We did have two questions for you, Pat, what was that? Questions?
No, no, I just wanted him to know it was a unanimous decision.
And yes, we did want you to know that it was a unanimous decision. We do have one advocate, our work traveling right now, but it was a six to zero vote. And, Kelly, you have a question?
It's contingent on background, a reference checks as well as physical and protest.
Yes, and...
Standard with our employees.
It is contingent with the background check and the...
Drug screening.
Drug screening and physical. And we will send you all of that as well in the email.
Okay.
And your references, you did already send those to us and gave us permission to check that out, so we'll get a chance to do them.
All right.
That's where we're at on our end. And when you receive that, you are more than welcome to let us know what information you are looking for, what you thought of since then.
Okay.
And you get a chance to read that over.
Very good.
And contingent upon your acceptance of the offer and the things checked out, you know, the start date would be, you know, as soon as you can, so...
Okay. All right.
All right. Is there anything else you have at this first at this point, or are you all set for now?
I'm all set.
All right, wonderful. Well, thank you for talking to us, and we'll be hearing from you soon.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night tonight.
You too. Bye.
Bye.
Well, we hope to hear from you soon, if we're not.
That was good.
I got, I got the impression from that last interview that he wanted it sooner rather than later.
Well, he said, oh, it's March.
Yeah, he wanted that offer sooner rather than later.
I thought he would respond at least like, yes. I think he shocked it up. He was making it, let us know by Friday or... Well, because, well, that's the thing, it's like, yeah, we should have said, you know, that, you know...
We gotta make, send it to him, he's gonna get it. We've got to get all the information for our...
Let's give him a few days, see if he responds. We don't hear from him Friday.
Discuss our next action, so while we're all together, so that we don't need to reiterate our next action, should he turn it down.
So we're going to act to come out of recess.
Well...
Do we have any back there?
Do we, do we agree on a type, and we'd like to hear a plan? Friday?
We have.
By the end of the week?
When you make an offer, you usually have, it's like, you know, to, you know, just leave them hanging, they need to have an update.
We could, we could probably add that in the email too, we would like to have your response.
You're the person up, maybe you have it.
Right. Well, we have the whole...
I have an offer from that I used for Bill, you know, I can just basically...
Did Bill come right back? How did that work?
He did, he, he, it was right, he accepted like right then.
Yeah.
And it was just, you know, I did the reference check and the background, and it's like, the drugs, he came into work and he did, you know...
I expect he's just gonna want to see the email itself and view it, and then probably let it sound right away, assuming, but, you know, it happens when you're soon.
And we need to put a date in there, so we need to decide on what date we want, to have our response by...
Right? Friday?
Oh, that long?
Seven, seventy-two hours, right?
Yeah, that's funny.
Little more.
Well, that's...
Three days. Monday?
Tuesday, Monday, I have to...
Thursday's days would be Friday. Yes. I was gonna say, I think, I think, I think almost as soon as he gets that, gets the formal document, I think he'll get back with us real quick. I think honestly, all he needs to do is sleep on it right now.
Oh, he might want, he's probably discussing with his wife, I'm sure. Right, you know, you make those decisions.
Well, she's in ministry or something.
Right. So, we're gonna go, is that Friday, is that the agreed?
I think Thursday, because that gives us Friday to...
Thursday by P M?
Yeah, because that gives us Friday to get something.
Get everything.
People are looking on the weekends, you know, even on the end of May or something, so...
Well, we can go ahead and come up with our option B, as we're waiting for him.
Do we have a good option B here? I don't.
Let's start with him.
I, I would then, I guess, maybe I'd like to see the resumes of what we received to see if there's anybody in there that...
Slipped through the crowd.
Pardon?
Slipped through a crowd, maybe.
Yeah.
But he's our guy. He's our guy.
Yeah.
Is that camera on or off?
I believe so.
There you go.
All right.
We want him, we want him to be our guy.
Yeah.
We want him to be our guy.
All right, so, do we go with Thursday, 5 P M? I didn't hear anything back there.
I'd say yes.
Yeah, that's three business days, that's...
I think that's...
Well, he's been out playing, he knows.
He's getting it tonight, which means he's...
We are meeting. So Thursday by five would be great.
Right, because I think he's at...
Is that a regular meeting? Is that agenda, if that's a regular meeting? If it's college meeting? Is it a special?
What's that?
Yes.
It made it a regular meeting.
It's a special meeting, you cannot amend the agenda.
Okay, so we won't be able to amend that agenda.
Correct.
Unless we... Even, even, even if it's within twenty, twenty-four hour notice of the public, it's based on that.
Same? Um, that, I don't know. Because if every member of council were there, then you could, with council involvement in the agenda, but everybody has to be there. Mark Robinson will not be there, so you cannot amend the agenda.
So it'd have to cancel on the noon.
Well, he made a very valid point about if it's within twenty-four hours...
If it's more than the notice time, we could maybe put an amended agenda out.
And you don't have to...
If you need it. Because we just have to follow the published agenda, but if we amend it with enough notice time, then we could have amended and may add it to the agenda prior to the meeting. Yes, potentially.
So what are we talking about adding? Is the plan B, is that what you're talking about? Or the acceptance?
If we hear... I think the acceptance is all we do.
Well, we are approved behind...
Yeah, I don't think... Okay, no, okay. The only reason we would have to address it is if we need to go with the plan B. All right. So if he says yes, then we're done. I mean, we're set fine.
Right.
And hopefully here we start it by Thursday.
All right.
He will be attending his first meeting Thursday night.
That would be great. That would be terrific.
We probably should let him know if we have a meeting Thursday, so he accepts it. Our Thursday's meeting.
Sure, positive.
I want to let him know in his contingency, in his offer letter, Tanya, that should he decide to accept.
We've got thirty-five minutes, yeah.
I'm sorry.
We've got thirty-five minutes.
I want to put in an offer letter, I'm sure, because I want to use Phil's, but you might want to make sure that you put in there that should he decide to accept that there is a meeting Thursday.
There's something, she would say, look, you have to know...
Well, if... I mean, if he's accepting, by the time we do it is Tuesday, and then all of this goes through, I don't know how we're gonna get to a Thursday meeting, but if we do, that's great. He can still come, even if he's not official, and kind of get his feet on.
He's up, well, once he accepts, it's, he's official, but he just has to be sworn in.
And we have to do the drug screen, the physicals, the reference, all of that before.
But that, that can be done tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And he's never working three things. If he wants to come out as a member of public, say, then I would even...
Our public says what?
If he wanted to come and attend as a member of public on Thursday...
If he's not...
Before he's officially hired, that would be nice, but it's not something that we're...
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I keep moving up. Our managers come in a lot fast, yeah, this should be...
I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
I'd say, we bring him in, we bring him in, passes, we pay him, we bring him in, and he doesn't pass, we don't pay him.
We want to shake her. So is the consensus if there needs to be a plan B that will be grossed out Thursday, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, are we good?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Air conditioning in the old town home. We've received one quote beforehand and one quote this week, one quote is coming this week, and the thought is, as you see the highlighted area, it is possible that it might go over the five thousand that we have approved. The idea was to approve more than that, so we don't have to do this again when the second one, when the next one comes in this week, that it might be, what do we say, well, it's a naturally C six thousand, I was thinking for two thousand hundred, whatever you want to choose, something along that lines, because we might be two hundred over our original quote.
And if I may, we will be over, because the electric is going to be separate, and it has to be wired into the box, the panel.
And there's a permit required, so it's gonna be...
Well, we don't pay for the permit, though. It's our building.
We could, though.
He's still on that, not, that mine's, on that...
Mark, you're so good.
I told you, he's in...
So that's why the six thousand was the difference in both of those. And Mark, I was thinking they were two separate?
I, I did notice some things, but I thought it was a little strange on the one from Anthony Hewlett, thirty-one. Because if you look at the first, the top part, it says hundred twenty thousand BTU, Bryant two-stage, ninety-six percent, five-ton coil, and then shows fifty-five hundred, but then over, he says five-ten AC, five thousand. But then the next line is the high efficiency, for the four-ton, it's forty-five hundred, and he says four-ton AC, forty-eight hundred. So I was like, Matt, I didn't understand what those, those breakdown numbers were, because it seemed like on the four-ton, it was more on the second line than on the first one. It didn't make sense. They've already got the coil in the first price, though. So air conditioning consists of three things. They've already got one thing in that price. So all they have to add is the outdoor components, the wiring and the lines that hook the two up. So I thought originally this was a good price, this Hewlett guy. And I would think that for warranty purposes, it may be suggested that there's gonna be a little difference in price, but I would probably go with this guy, who would be the guy that put the furnace in and some duct work, because he's already done that. And if something is not right with the air conditioning side, he's responsible, instead of somebody coming in, and now you fight, like, I did this, he did that. It may be a good idea, just to call up and see if you can do a little bit better, you know, price-wise. And one guy doing it, instead of five hands and everybody blaming somebody next summer when it's not working correctly.
So we've got one more, they're coming in this week as well, and we know an idea as well, apart from where we're at, it's not going to, like I said, we have to change that from the five thousand dollars.
Is it necessary for the high efficiency, for the, you know, usage, is it, and what, you know, is it just the first one, the high efficiency, the other ones are, oh, no, the other one is, so they're both high, I mean, is it necessary to get high efficiency at that? Sometimes it doesn't pay to get high efficiency.
Both of these are written really confusingly, like, it's hard to decipher, and I do this. This, he wrote this in February, for the faras, and the two, and he put it in, and he did some duct work, and he put in the coil. So now all that's left is a portion of the air conditioning and the electrical part. But I think that these were options up here, maybe originally. I, I don't know.
And I can ask him to rewrite his bid.
Yeah, for exactly what he's going to give us at this point. Well, and I, you know, I've dealt with Northwest heating improvement, you know, he's, he's local in town, he's been in business for a hundred years, he put our AC in that, in furnace, and we got it. I have a hard time working for somebody who works under their actual, I mean, I, I just, he doesn't specify that it's a high efficiency either. So you don't know what we're getting for that person. All he specifies, no, thirteen, the thirteen SEER is entry-level air conditioning in Michigan. That's the lowest you can get. And he actually specifies where it says thirteen SEER or first rated. Is there a CER rating on the other one?
And that looks like it's the sixty thousand cooling capacity, when the other one is a hundred and twenty thousand, it's double.
Well, the hundred and twenty is for the furnace. Sixty thousand is the usual, which is five times sixty thousand. It doesn't say here, but that would be a good question, see what the CER rating is? Because the bare minimum is thirteen. And we just obtained more than we should.
And, and we're sure that this estimate from Hewlett would still be good, since this was done back in February?
Yes, Hewlett.
Oh, okay.
I verified with him just last week.
Okay.
Yep.
And then it's interest date, since we don't pay for permits, like you put in there, permits are included.
Commissions included.
So we're getting something.
It's handwritten, but it's, there's got a whole lot more detail in Northwest, though.
So we don't have the three to assess in front of us right now, so that's not the concern at this point. The first step is to prove that at one of these three would be, then that would be the best step. So we're getting ahead of ourselves by...
Who are you waiting for now? Andy Staley.
Andy's, yeah.
They'll be out tomorrow morning. Well, so, you know, so we even need to have this on, right?
We just need to go with the amount and then look at context, once we have everything in front of us.
Do we have an estimate, how much is the electrical unit?
Only from Hewlett. They're all going to be different based on, so that's why we did the naturally C, because they're each ones...
Do they have breakers in there, do you? I didn't, I never looked. They don't have the Robert Schur fuses, right? They should. I don't see breakers, because they have, there's two there. Because it's just the double breaker, that's the electrical. That's not a big deal. Should be good. Unless you have an electrical light, you have to... No, do you?
So we have the other estimate, right?
So one, one quote has a four and a five, the other one has just a five, are we recommending, are we matching up to the five for the next quote? What are we recommending, I guess I'd throw that to you, Mark? Well, it depends what he put in originally.
For the permits?
Yeah, this, this Hewlett was done back in January, he must have given us two prices. Right. One was a two-stage Bryant, which is probably the right thing he should do. If we got that, we're in good shape. The other thing is the air conditioning, which should match up to a five-ton unit. And where I get a little confused is that it's highlighted here at the bottom, these minus, forty-eight hundred. Is that the additional cost for the condenser in it, or what? I don't know. I'm kind of...
Looks like it's the forty-eight hundred, and then any duct, it's gonna be additional five.
Yeah, forty-eight, forty-eight hundred dollars.
Four tons, seven, five ton. But the top, the both of the...
But again, I think that that's maybe a good reason to have, at least consider him, because if there is an issue, nobody else has touched it, it's only him. So he's gonna have to make it right. If it doesn't cool correctly, we got it. I mean, he's gonna have to make it right. He, he, he does specify thermostats, where the game Northwest doesn't specify thermostats.
The thermostat, we're...
Yeah, there is in there.
The, the top two are the heat, the quote to put in the furnace, the bottom was the air to add later.
Okay, so that's what the 5,500, 4,500 was, which furnace to put in which coil. So which one went in, the four-ton or the five-ton? I don't know. Because the furnace has to have a.
The dry, yeah, the dry.
Yeah, the furnace. I hold the five-ton. And a guy from Northwest, that guy put it, whoever put in the furnace did a really nice job.
Yeah, I looked at it. He did a nice job.
And he's talking about a five-ton air from our furnace. And he's talking four-ton, so.
Well, I'll get more information from Hewlett.
Well, the difference between the four-ton and the five-ton, according to this, is only $200. 5,000 versus 4,800.
This was the furnace, but this is the, he only used one air quote.
On here, I see 120 BTU unit level, 5,500, and then it says five-ton AC 5,000. I'm assuming this is a five-ton is 5,000, and four-ton unit would be 4,800. That's how I'm looking at it now, I guess.
Right.
I was looking at where they had the number ones.
Yeah, that's what I didn't understand. What's the difference, why do we have 5,500 here, 5,000 there, 4,500, 4,800? But I think that's what it is. This is for the furnace installed now, and then if we add the AC later, that's why I asked which furnace did we go with.
We'd have to find that out some sort of way.
Well, we still need the other one, now we can look through it. This isn't the, like I said, second step we're going to have ourselves. First step is a motion to increase the budget that we have from 5,000 to 6,000 for the project.
Budget, budget number?
Why, don't we wait till we get the other estimate, and then approve the vendor?
We're going to wait till.
We don't have to. If it's been approved, then it can go ahead and be put in by the manager. We don't have to go back and do it. Once this is done, they look at the three quotes, they put it in, we're done. Doesn't have to come back.
I know, I understand that. I'm just saying, it's like, we'll have the vendor in there to, the vendor is named in the motion.
I got to tell you, listening to Mark talk, there's value to bringing in the guy that did the installation prior to, and even if you're off by a few hundred dollars, and he's less than by a few hundred dollars, that's nothing compared to keeping the guy that did the original work. So, do we really have to wait for this other guy, and can't we just go with?
Just go with your own.
I mean, I think, to me, it makes no sense to go with somebody off that has not done the original work.
Well, I mean, if we're looking at the five-ton price, 5,000 versus 4,250, I mean, that's a 750 dollars.
We're just wasting time by waiting for it. We just get it going.
Yeah, I think we do want to get it going.
We'll let him do it then. We'll be done with it. Then he's going to, he has to hide the warranty, because it's all his stuff, all his labor.
So, Mark, what's your motion?
My motion is to, well, I'm not involved in this, but.
Oh, are you not comfortable?
I would make, I would go with the motion to have, do I have to start from scratch? I'll make a motion to let Hewlett add the additional air conditioning system to the existing furnace for.
You could go with that motion and just specify the five, the five-ton, I guess. You could go with that motion, just specify the, let's just say.
Installation of air conditioning, five.
To approve the installation of air conditioning by Hewlett, heating and cooling, and required electrical work at the Old Town Hall, at a cost not to exceed.
We still need the money for the electric in the possible duct work, so that's why we put $6,000.
Okay, so, I think, is this the right one, is that?
No. Well, it's highlighted.
So we're talking about.
So I think electrical work and.
Yeah, the highest would be 5,500 plus the five, so it would be 6,000, not to exceed 6,000.
But we still need to get the electrical work, is going to be a separate?
Yeah, not separate.
Okay. Well, then the 6,000 is not going to work.
This, we, this is the one we put, because it was not over $5,000 when we paid for it.
But I thought, I guess I thought that we said with the four-ton versus the five-ton, for the $200 difference, to go with that, that brings it to the 500, and then the duct work of the 55, okay, I don't know what electrical work is going to cost, but.
Mark, can we put a five-ton air on a four-ton furnace?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought we didn't know what we put in.
Did we specify that electrical work was not included, or we had assumed that this all includes, all the?
No, the electrical work is not included. We have to hire our own electrical person.
Bill's bragged at this on his own, so I never had a chance to do this, except quote on it. So I don't know what Bill said, and I don't know what the original quote, because this is very confusing.
Yeah, it looks like they quoted two different.
They did. It's either four-ton or five-ton.
You can't, like, say, well, you want this one?
So we can go ahead and approve the motion. He needs to come back out and clarify before he's contracted to do it.
And if he wishes, he can call me.
What would be a reasonable amount of electrical cost that we could add to the 6,000?
Typically, if you get an electrician involved, it enters at three, 350 bucks. So why don't we just approve not to exceed 6,400?
Well, it's going to be 5,200 plus electric, that's it.
Most would be 5,500 plus.
Electric.
The electric.
So it's the five-hundred's duct work, right?
Or if we, if the five-ton.
Oh, that's already added?
If we had the five-ton AC in, it would be 5,000, and then the 500, if they need additional work.
They already did the duct work, and they did the furnace, so that's just.
Okay, so we're only looking at the cost of the four-ton or the five-ton unit, plus the.
And he's got a size, that's his job.
So we're at six grand. Liz, you're awesome. I think that was your original.
I was going to say, if the duct work's done, then we're at 5,500.
So can you read the motion for us, so we can get a support?
The motion was to approve the installation of air conditioning by Hewlett and required electrical work at Old Town Hall at a cost not to exceed $6,000. Support, is that? Are we just amended to say electrical and duct?
The duct work is already done.
The duct work is done, it's not.
Yeah, it was highlighted in error.
It was highlighted in error. Sorry, I didn't hear that. Okay.
All right, so a motion on the table by Councilman Bryce, supported by, I'm sorry, Councilman Batsu, supported by President Bryce, and the list could be submitted.
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
And, Mark, you're going to clarify with them whether it's an eight or four, five-ton unit, because there's only $200 difference in motion recovery.
Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Skornikoff?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, six, zero. And we will continue to gather all the information on it, for the contractors offered. Next up, we have the village manager's report.
I didn't provide the A through whatever, because it hasn't changed. So J through O, the only new things to report would be the creek testing. We did do our first round of monthly tests, and I did make note of the temperature and that it was sunny. And everything has been posted on the website. The credit union, Larry already talked about. 86 James Street, the gentleman that was here for the zoning board of appeals meeting, submitted new plans to the building official, and they were within our zoning, so it was approved for permit.
Sure.
You all know about the Oakwood Road construction. And then the only thing that I didn't put on here that I forgot is, I wanted to ask you guys if we wanted to do another mailing for the Septic Smart in September. If so, maybe now would be a good time to start throwing that together. I received a whole bunch of goodies from SEMCOG, and one water to put like in swag bags, like the DDA hands out at September Fest, like doggie do-bags, grease bags, water bottles, stuff like that. If you guys wanted us to do another big Septic thing, like we did last year.
I think it's important for increasing residents' awareness of Septic systems and proper maintenance, because, you know, we know that that's going to be important for the health and safety of our community.
I agree with you.
I think reaching out to Harrison, again, that was very receptive to residents, they were excited to receive them. So if they're interested in.
Does everybody want me to do that? Okay.
Keeps it in the radar.
Was that $500, is that what it cost us last year?
Yeah, it was the, the printing of the cards was nominal. It was the postage.
All right. Next up, we have item 15, which is our public comments. Anybody in the public have any comments for us? That leads us to 16, or items from our trustees. Can you start coming, or secondly?
I have nothing else to add.
I just wanted to comment on the complaint that has been, complaints, plural, that have been circulating around the dumpster on the Jeff's Pizza. I did have an opportunity to talk to the manager via phone today, because I saw that it was not on the agenda, and I know, I did go into that dumpster area. It does smell, there's odor, there is grease on the concrete that I believe should be picked up. There was a, what looked to be like a Tupperware bin that was filled with water, but it looked like coffee almost, but it was that dark. So clearly, the Tupperware bin is not used at the Jeff's Pizza. So in my discussions with him, he did complain that others are using his dumpster, all right? And there are local residents that are abusing his dumpster. And I commented that there's nothing that the council could do to help him there, but I did inform him, he may want to talk to the sheriff department to help him if there's something wrong going on that way. But I did tell him I'd be talking about it tonight, because the multiple complaints we had from the surrounding area, he would assure, he assured me that he would be contacting the sheriff to try to control the outside abuse. I think we need to watch it. I think he needs to do his due diligence to lock it up if people are going in there, you know? But that's what I found out about that, that's all I.
And he's already been in contact multiple times with his office, he's already been in contact with the sheriff, he's already had pictures, yes, and he's requested to provide video notes.
He was planning on attending the meeting tonight.
Yeah, he said he was, and he couldn't make it, but certainly glass bottles, I mean, you know, Beurkog, whatever, they don't sell it at the store, so I get it, there's got to be some truth to the abuse that is also going on there, so.
And he's well aware of who it is, and he's contacted, and he's not getting reference back, so he's, from the police they've given him.
Okay, so I was not aware about the already logged complaints. He did not tell me that, but I suggested that's where the route he went, so he didn't say he already did that, so. But it's communication, right? So nobody talks about it, we don't know, and I'm talking about it, so now we do know. Thank you.
Well, you just ask in the office, and you'll find out. Any questions you have, just direct them in, and we'll get your answers.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I want to commend the DPW. They came out and repaired the sidewalk at James Street, on the corner there at James and Mill, and did a really nice job of it. I did see that when they had it cut out, they had put barricades and stuff for safety reasons and stuff, and did a really nice job of it. They also replaced the two posts on there. When I was in there and asked them what happens to those, they said, well, some of the trash haulers cut the corners when they shouldn't, so.
My posts are replaced multiple times a year.
Yeah. So that was just one thing, I just wanted to say the DPW did a really nice job. Another thing is that with the extreme heat that we had recently, our search team was activated to go out and do a check on the seniors in the area. And one of the things that we learned recently, as part of that, is that there are apparently no longer any official cooling centers in Brampton Township at all, because the senior center had been designated as a cooling center, but they don't have any accommodations for sleeping, no cots or beds or anything, and so they cannot technically be a cooling center. So I think that during the course of that discussion, it was discussed about emergency management, and the chief is in possession of the township's emergency management plan, and I think that we should, I would like to consider a review of our emergency management plan, because I think it's important for us to have some kind of contingency in place when we have either extreme heat or extreme cold and potential power outages, where we have adverse people in the community that may have needs to get to someplace where they can either warm or cool or whatever. So I think that's something I would like to take a look at sometime in the future, and see what our plan is, and what we can do to make sure that our residents are protected in these types of environments.
And I know we discussed that this winter, when it was so cold, and talked with both police and fire, the town hall could be opened. It cannot in the summer because of not having air. The only registered cooling center that we had is the library at this point. Once we have the air, we're able to do that. So we're able to be registered both, because we are, it's cold.
Do we have a map for a sleeping?
No. You do not have to provide it, they can come and they can go. You don't have to provide, you list what you provide. So as long as we have it available, but we can't, so the only thing listed for this week was electrical.
Well, I was told that was why the senior center was removed, because it was designated, but they do not have any cots for it.
And they have the food, I know with the kitchen, that makes a difference. So with us, we don't have to worry about that, you know? But we do need to, to have.
Because it needs clarification, otherwise it should be removed, then they can still use the senior center, so I guess that just needs clarification.
Because of the kitchen is certified, that's why they have the issue with it. That's the difference between, so, yeah. But we need to put that together. I know we have all the paperwork for that, I received it, we went over with some plan, but we didn't go for that one.
So just curious, Larry, what temperature did it reach to trigger that?
I.
You mean the feels like?
I think it's, I don't know, I think it's got to be above, I don't know, it's 90 to 95 degrees, wet ball temperature, something like that. I'd have to check to see exactly what triggered that. It was the chief who called for a senior jack by our search team. So it was up to the fire department, the chief, he's, I'm assuming he's the emergency manager for township. I know he's in possession of township's emergency management plan. That's why I think it'd be good to, maybe a good idea to coordinate with our emergency management plan, and probably needs some updates, because I don't know, when ours was last reviewed or updated, but I think we probably should go through it and get an update.
Well, if we're part of the township also, maybe they have, and they have access funds for other places, maybe that should be a good idea.
And schools, gymnasiums are typically open during the study.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's all that I have.
All I have to say is I'm extremely pleased with the cooperation of the council in getting us, hopefully, the village manager very quickly. I'm very excited when I leave, and I can expect that to happen. So, that's it, that's all I got, but I'm happy as a peanut pie.
And I'll be the other pea, I'm just as happy.
So Dale, if you're listening, we'd like you, we'd like you to come forward.
Thank you. Mark, anything else?
No, just pee back at everyone else. I have nothing to do. Got four more minutes.
Wonderful. All right. Number 17 will be adjourned.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Support, Larry.
Motion to adjourn, 9:56, supported by Councilman, I'm sorry, motion made by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Batsu, all in favor? Applause. Motion carries.
Good, we got all of our agenda items.